Okay, do I need to go out of executive session? Do we need a motion to go out of executive? Okay. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Please rise. invocation by Supervisor Watson and a pledge by Supervisor Moss.
Please bow your head. Heavenly Father, we ask that you continue to keep this nation under your care and provide a clear vision of your will to our leaders. Guide this board in the decisions before us today. Give us understanding and compassion as we exercise those duties. Please protect and defend those that are defending us overseas. Amen.
Please join me in this pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we start, there's a few things I want to make some announcements. First, I want to introduce, we have some visitors from Diamondback Elementary School here today to learn about the government process. Want to say hello, welcome. Thank you. I think you're going to learn something today, too. We have some pretty good presentations for you. Okay. Second is, I want to tell everyone that we have a visitor, our state senator Kelly Ward is in the audience today. We thank her for joining us. And if you notice Supervisor Joy Brotherton hasn't been here for the last several meetings, and I have a statement from her family that I'd like to read. Supervisor Brotherton is being treated at Kingman Regional Medical Center for a serious blood infection. Although it is a long process, we are expecting her to make a full recovery. We thank everyone for their prayers and good wishes and for allowing the family privacy during this time, and we'd like to wish Joy Brotherton a very speedy recovery as well. Okay. I need a motion to call for an executive session to be held on May 19, 2014 at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03.
So moved.
Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Are there any committee and/or legislative? Supervisor Johnson?
Madam Chair, thank you. I was invited to attend the National Forest Symposium in Portland, Oregon. It was the county, forest counties and schools that got together. They are coming around to our way of thinking that we need to have permanent funding for PILF. They're looking for mechanisms at the federal level to push that through. They had Senator Wyden there from Oregon who's trying to push it. They're looking for sponsors to push that ahead. Also, had a conference call with the EPA on the waters. It was last week, and it was engage in dialogue and hear comments from local stakeholders regarding waters of the U.S. rule. The comment period of the new rule is officially in effect for 90 days. Donna Downing with the Office of Water gave a brief presentation about the new rule and short overview of what the process had been so far. The new rule establishes what are called bright line categories that define what waters are jurisdictional and what ones are not. Under the new rule, bright line categories are interstate and territorial waters, native waters that contribute to the flow of water, and the definition of tributaries is expanded on to include tributaries that contribute to the flow of the water of the U.S. Wetlands are also included that contribute to the flow that are adjacent waters. She mentioned that the EPA is in the process of completing a scientific assessment regarding the waters of the U.S. and that it must be completed before the final rule goes into effect because some of the new rule is based off the new scientific definitions. There's no set date on when the new scientific assessment will be completed, but they assume it will be shortly before the comment period ends or a little after. Throughout the call, they mentioned that the status of the MS-4 will not change under the new rule and that permits needed to maintain ditches that are connected to the water of the U.S. are usually exempt from requiring a permit or be required to have a nationwide permit number three, which usually means it's a non-reporting permit. Due to the limited time and the number of questions for participants, the EPA is considering setting up another call before the comment period ends. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, I just wanted to do a little quick update about our trout situation. People remember that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife stopped stocking trout at Willow Beach Fish Hatchery and then said that they were going to actually end the trout stocking program altogether. We've been sort of going back and forth on that. I went to Washington and testified in front of the House Appropriations Committee, and there's a lot of buzz around the whole country because ending any sport fishing stocking program is going to have devastating effects on economies everywhere. So we've been trying to make Washington understand that, but I'm happy to report today that Arizona Game and Fish has stepped up to the plate as a temporary fix because they know how important it is to make sure that fishermen and tourists know that we will have fish in the water when they plan their vacations, that they have stepped up and they will be stocking 21,000 fish, and it will all be below Davis Dam in the Bullhead City area. When U.S. Fish and Wildlife heard about that, they stepped up a little and they said that those fish can be raised at the hatchery, which is a very good thing. It opens the door, and we now have a commitment from them to sit down with all the stakeholders, which would be Mojave County and U.S. Game and Fish and U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and take a serious look at the water delivery system, the pipe that has been broken, and see exactly how much it would cost to fix and either explore other ways to deliver fish, water, to the fish stocking areas in Willow Beach. So it's very good. I am cautiously optimistic that we will have a fix and that we will have a permanent solution, but the short-term fix will go a long way in making sure that that part of our economy doesn't suffer. So I want to thank everybody who helped out on that. Anything else? Do we have a county administrator's report?
I have no report today, Madam Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Number four, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the February 18 and March 3, 2014 Board Supervisors' Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, right now, we have our call to public. Those wishing to address the board at the call to public regarding matters not on the board agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk a call to the public, a request to speak form located in the back of the room prior to the meeting. That's these, yellow sheets. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to responding to criticism, referral to staff, or placing a matter on a future agenda. Comments are restricted to items not on the regular agenda, with the exception of the consent agenda, and must relate to matters within the jurisdiction of the board. We have a lot of people signed up, and I know a lot of people are here to hear presentations about our water situation in Mojave County. So we thought about it, and we will do these comments before the presentations. They are limited to three minutes, and we will do our presentations, and we will not be taking questions from the audience at that time. We think this is probably the best way because we're going to be getting a lot of information today, and so just for the sake of time. So our first person up would be John Lutensky. I'm sorry if I pronounced your name wrong. And I think you're the only one who's not want to speak about water, correct?
No, I have two sheets.
Okay, well, we'll go, you have two sheets? All right, well, seeing-
I'm not going to consolidate them.
Oh, you're not? Okay. So noted. Address, please.
Okay. My name is John Lutensky. I live at 11290 East Sand River Ranch Road, Kingman, Arizona 86401. Good morning. I came, we've got to stop meeting like this, but I came to speak on something that I haven't heard that much about. We, I've been here on a regular basis. I've been here about 30 years. In the past, a lot of issues come up, and I know you guys only have two ears apiece and you have to consider a lot of items. I would like to discuss the issue of the night sky. I mean, when people are building things or doing things here, one of the last things people think about is the night sky. Now, the United States is getting educated to the fact that little hamlets, little towns, cities, counties, states are passing laws. I don't mean foolish things, but I'm not the kind of person, and I don't think most of the people here would move in next to an airport and then complain about all the planes flying over their head, or move to a high school with a baseball diamond that lights are on to 2:00 in the morning. I'm not talking about that. I would like the board to consider some of the issues we've had in the past about people's track records and have they been good citizens of the county or the city or the neighborhood. I'm talking about somebody living in a nice neighborhood, and then all of a sudden, the board or the zoning approves a brand-new car lot without consideration to the fact that these people have been living there for 20 or 25 years, or whatever it is. In my case, close to 30. And all of a sudden, I got mercury lamps lighting up my whole yard. And I'm not a stargazer, is that fact, but one of the things that impressed me about Arizona was when you walked out your door at night, you were able to look up at the sky and see something. And I'm not just talking about planes flying overhead, but the fact that you could see stars. Just recently, we could see Mars, great views of the moon. I'm a romantic as far as if I see a nice moon, I go back in the house and I get my wife and enjoy it. So in future, I would like the county and the supervisors taking into consideration if people are building or doing something in an area, to look at what they've done in the past and to know if it's going to affect the night sky or not. I don't want that to be considered last. I'm not against progress, and neither are none of my neighbors, but we don't want to be foolish about those things when everybody's aware now to the environment, to the extent that we do affect other people and other things. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. While you're up there, you don't have to come back. I moved you up, so-
Oh, you did?
I wanted to put them together, but please, everybody, we had probably 15 people, 20 people signed up. So if you could make it brief, I'm sure some of your questions are going to be answered- during the presentation, so please keep that in mind as well. So if you want to-
Okay, thank you. I'll try and make it short, being a solemn up here twice. When I was a little boy, there was an advertisement that said, "When you're out of slits, you're out of beer." When you're out of water, you're out of life. So there's a consideration, there's a lot of things that water does for people that they don't take into consideration until they see a neighbor down the street or a golf course. And I don't care about this recycled water. That recycled water has to come from someplace. And just because they filtered it and are putting it on our lawns doesn't mean it's correct to waste it. We have a finite amount of water in this area. I know that some of my neighbor's wells go dry periodically. I've listened to the Commerce Commission down in Phoenix, and the lady that ran that board had said that Arizona has been giving its water away far too long and not getting anything in return. When you have an atomic power plant that uses the most water, and what are we doing with the electricity? I mean, now, Phoenix is using a lot of it now, but I think they still exporting electricity to another state. That electricity is being produced by water. Like I said, people don't understand the amount of water that gets used on an everyday basis. You don't miss the water until the well runs dry, and now we have ecologists, tree huggers, and everything. But when it comes to water, there is no more. Once your well goes dry, you're hauling, or your neighbor is wasting it. I would just like that the water issue in Arizona and in this county in particular, and especially under the major drought conditions we're having in this country, are being taken into consideration, and there are going to be some limits put on some people. And with that, I'll give up the floor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Like I said, I think a lot of these questions and concerns are going to be answered in these presentations. So I'm thinking, you know, I don't know if we want to wait, but since you guys came here, I'm going to go through the list, and you tell me.
Good morning. My name is Rita Fox. I live at 2278 South Kirkland Road in Golden Valley, Arizona, and my zip code is 86413. There's a couple of things I want to talk about regarding the situation with Kingman Farms. The first one is the dust that's being created by the denuding of the landscape there. There's been so much dust, I provided Supervisor Watson some photographs and some information that I had regarding what we were experiencing in Golden Valley. What I'd like to see the board do, if they're able to do that, is direct the Health Department to do something about this dust, to monitor the particulate matter, to see what type of pesticides and fertilizers will be coming into the air. This cannot be healthy for the community. I understand it's also happening out in the Red Lake area or the Kingman area where they're plowing away the dust. I know that Kingman Farms is aware of the complaints from the community. I'm also aware that they don't care. And it's up to you to do something about it, as far as I'm concerned. The second thing is about the water. As this gentleman just presented momentarily ago, it is a finite situation. We don't have a whole lot of water. None of us wants our wells to run dry. But in the same vein, considering there's no thought regarding the amount of dirt they put into the air, is there going to be any thought into what they put into the water? Is it going to remain safe for us to drink what's left of it? All of these things need regulation. And the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, they can't do anything for us. I know that they've gone and met with the farmers and said, "Hey, you know, there's some ideas on what we can do to make it easier on the community," but it doesn't appear any of those things were implemented. So I give up the rest of my time to the next person that wants to come up. Oh, one other thing. It may be beneficial to the community if you would offer a meeting at least once a quarter that's in the evening for those people that are working and unable to attend. I can assure you that this auditorium would be completely overflowing if they were allowed to see you in the evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may? Just for the students that are here, call to the public, the board, it's not an agendized item, so we're not allowed to respond to this, so people come up and talk. So if you wonder why we're just sitting here and not saying-
This is the opportunity for the public to address their government with anything that they feel is important to them. It's a very important part of the process. Okay, next up.
I'm too short. Hi, I'm Denise Ben-Suson, 4811 East Kaibill, Kingman, Arizona 86409. My well is pretty much directly, I'm one of the wells directly affected, in other words. And I need to bring up the fact that we're in a 12-year drought, and if anybody can count, we have no future, you know, nothing in sight. There's no future in sight that there's any relief at all in this 12-year drought. We also have, we're dealing with a gentleman called Mr. Rhodes who actually got caught paying off politicians in Vegas. So we're dealing with someone that is not necessarily a very honest person. The problem is, we can't fix this. Right now, there's nothing we can do. He's not doing anything illegal. There's no stipulations in the agricultural, you know, name. He can do what he wants. He can pump 5 million gallons a minute, and we can't do anything about it. What we can do about it, and what we've decided to do, we are going to rally together the community, and we want an AMA, an active management area. There's nothing else that we can do. This idea that the AMA is going to take over our water, blah, 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 is ridiculous. Let's just take 10 of Jim Rhodes, just 10. Let's just take 10. We could figure 1,000, but let's see if anybody else is going to come in and abuse the water system the way he does, to the point that everyone else's property value is gone. If, you know, you've got about three days without water, I don't know, you've got a bunch of dead people laying around, whatever. But the fact is, our leadership needs to take control and needs to enter into the AMA. What it does is gives a slight amount restrictions, especially on agriculture, which is 90% of the usage of water in Arizona. So really don't have much else to say except, because there's a lot of people going to show some pictures that will enlighten you as to some, let's see, let's just put it right out, lies about what was going to be happening on these farms. We also viewed, Jack Erhart and I both also viewed Monsanto being poured on top of the ground, fertilizer and such, and it was supposed to be organic. It was all supposed to be underground. You're going to see some pictures that are above ground, misters that you use in the Midwest, and they roll across. And so my time is up. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak, and I hope that you will do something about it.
Thank you, Denise.
Madam Chairman, my name is Bob Frisby. I live at 230 South Hillside Drive in Littlefield, Arizona. I'm employed by Beaver Dam Water Company and have had almost 30 years now of experience with Mojave County from a developer's standpoint and from a private-public water supplier and wastewater supplier regulated by the Arizona Corporation Commission. When I first came here, I developed a golf course, and I was in a developer mode, and I'd like everybody to understand that developers can be friends, not foes, especially if other people are trying to take your water. But I found out about the Clean Water Act that Supervisor Johnson discussed a little bit when I dredged the Beaver Dam Wash and had a million-dollar fine from the Corps of Engineers and the EPA, just to let them know that the SBA told me I had to do it prior to my funding, and that took five years of my life. So my lesson I've learned in Mojave County has always been water. I had to form, get a CCNN and form a utility, and that's all I do. I don't develop land anymore. But I have learned a lot about it. In 2005, there is a statute, it's Borhays versus Nebraska, wherein a judge allows people to take water out of your state to another state. We had that happen, and we formed No Nevada Water Grab. Mesquite Nevada tried to take 50,000 acre feet of our water from our basin, pump it into Nevada, and keep it in Nevada. None of it came back to us. So the fears, the concerns that I feel, we had the same thing. We filled the schoolhouse several times with these kind of meetings. But now I guess I'm going to learn about active management areas. But I would ask the board to consider, our basin up there is a shared basin with three other states, and what might be good here might not be good up there. Thank you.
Thank you. Well.
It's Bee Hopkins.
Good morning. My name is Bruce Hopkins. I live at 4815 West Chino in Golden Valley, and evidently, I'm not alone here today discussing the issues of Kingman Farms. We came down here from Washington in 2006 and purchased a place, and we've been working on it ever since, and I've never noticed a problem with dust before. And since October, three times, I've almost had to take my wife to the hospital because she can't breathe. And the dust, I've got pictures that I sent to the Farm Bureau of dust going 10,000 feet in the air. And there's a thing that they call best practices. Evidently, that's the only thing that regulates this farm out there. And first of all, he's not farming. He's grading acres and acres and acres out there, and he does it continuously. Now, I understand that he's going to give some people some jobs, and he wants to do good, but I think he has to be a good neighbor first. And the ruckus that he has caused out there, as far as I know from researching this, has gone back quite a few years, and they're not a good neighbor. They need to be regulated. They need to control their dust, and they need to be regulated for water usage. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Susan Bear. I live at 7656 West Abrigo in Golden Valley. In 1996, the Wallopi aquifer was proven to be in depletion. The city of Kingman paid for a water adequacy study. Per that study, the overdraft was 4,000 acre feet a year. In 2010, I was granted intervenor status using the same report, and we won proving that not only the Wallopi aquifer, but the Sacramento aquifer were in depletion. Some problems with the soil. This one here is called an era de soil. It forms in hot, dry climates under desert vegetation, which is what we have in Mojave County. Our soil is only good for rangeland, and the fertility is low, meaning we really have to shovel a lot to get it up there to grow anything. What is most concerning is water irrigation. This one here is a buried pipe method. We also have a center pivot. For every four gallons of water used, one gallon goes into the crops, the remaining three evaporate out. Our current water demands in Mojave County are not sustainable. Per the National Resource Defense Council, it found that more than 400 counties will face extremely high risks of water shortages. This is based on climate change and water risk. If we do not follow good water management and our water literally runs dry, we have no property values to pay anybody, including your salary. I encourage this board to consider the voting taxpayers and Mojave County, add Mojave County into an AMA. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Wayne Irwin. I lived at 2325 Kai Marquez in the north of Stockton Hill Road. I live two miles from Red Lake. I've been watching this operation now for months, all the drilling that's going on out there. And Kingman Farms, they have put requests for permits. They have 32 well permits for that area, just in the Red Lake area. If you go in and look at each and every one of the permits, you will also notice that some of these permits are for more than one well, some of them for as many as 10 wells. I watch day in and day out, all day trucks traveling out to Red Lake with loads of pipe after pipe after pipe. And this morning, on my way in, there were two semi-trucks with double trailers with the big green plastic irrigation pipes. Just the other day, I was out at Red Lake, and I saw the watering system like it was just showing you just a moment ago, and there's water just sprinkling all over. That doesn't look like a GPS water system that has- That doesn't look like a GPS water system that has been presented by Mr. Rhodes at the Kingman Farms, that they were going to do a responsible irrigation system using a GPS drip system. This is not a drip system. This is an awful lot of water, and my real concern, it's not just, it's not for agriculture, it's for something else. It's for control of the water, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Linda Watt.
My name is Linda Watt. I live at 964 South Haciampa Road in Golden Valley, 86413. Most of the information that I'm going to speak about this morning, I have obtained from the Golden Valley Area Plan, which was done on August 14 of 2002. One of the key goals of the Water Resources element in that plan states that the plan should limit water consumption to the aquifer's natural rate of recharge until another source of water is found to preserve groundwater quality and to conserve groundwater resources. On page 18 of the plan, it states that the Arizona Department of Water Resources did a groundwater study, which estimated that there is an adequate supply of groundwater of about 4,000 acre-feet per year available in the Golden Valley area of the basin. This annual supply will allow development in the area for somewhat more than 50 years. However, the amount of available groundwater supply clearly shows the limits on future groundwater use in the area. On page 19 of the plan, it states that the aquifer's natural recharge rate is 3,500 acre-feet per year. It's my understanding that Golden Valley has been in a 10-plus-year drought situation, so it's highly likely that the recharge rate is lower than the 3,500 acre-feet per year is listed in the plan. According to the Valley Pioneer's Water Company, for the last three years, in 2011, 5,631 acre-feet of water were pumped. In 2012, 4,460 feet of acre, acre-feet were pumped. In 2013, 5,864 acre-feet were pumped. So the total acre-feet in each of these three years well exceeds the 3,500 acre-feet per year recharge that was outlined in this plan. I feel that there needs to be a complete moratorium on additional water usage in order to comply with the stipulations in the Golden Valley Area Plan and to ensure the continued supply of fresh drinking water to the thousands of Golden Valley residents who are dependent upon this reservoir. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. John, John Watt.
John Watt, 964 South Haciampa, Golden Valley, Arizona. I'm going to defer most of my comments until I hear from the experts in this case. However, I would like to make one comment, and it kind of supports what my wife just told you all. The withdrawal currently exceeds the recharge of our aquifer, and I think there needs to be some kind of a moratorium put on any further use of the water from that aquifer until we get a better handle on where we're going to get our future water from. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Glenda Irwin.
Glenda Irwin, 2325 Cai Marquez in Kingman, north of town. And my husband Wayne and I live about two miles from Red Lake. And for the last several months since October, actually, we've watched the parade of trucks go by. I've been up at 2:30 in the morning seeing four tractors plowing that property, and there's thousands of acres that are being plowed, night and day. The wells, every night, we see lights where they're putting wells in, all day, all night, they're drilling wells. One of our neighbors was told, this is secondhand information, but one of our neighbors was told by an employee at that particular ranch or farm, that the plan was for drilling 300 wells. Now, this may or may not be true, but this is hearsay. The fact is, we see evidence that that is possibly the truth. They are drilling to the aquifer. Anyone who knows about water knows that it's pure water, and there's a lot of water, but this particular endeavor is accessing a natural aquifer that runs under the North Valley. We have concerns about the dust. On our way home from town, you can see billowing dust clouds going up. All this plowing is doing is farming dirt. The water, as was noted earlier, is evaporating as they're watering. I don't understand how they can morally process this water for that purpose under those circumstances. We have neighbors, friends who live across the valley in Valley Vista, who have dust concerns on everything, in everything, constantly from the dust that's being created. I would just like to find out that our community government can do something about this issue, and whoever controls water, well, they have the power, and as we get further into this drought, that's going to be so. And I'm glad to see all these children here. I hope that they will learn something today, that the voices of the community can accomplish something with you people. Thank you very much for your time.
Patricia Peterson. Is there a Patricia Peterson? Oh, okay. Is there?
My name is Patricia Peterson. I live at 952 Haciampa in Golden Valley, 86413. And again, I might be repeating some of the things that people have already said. I moved from a farming community in California and to Golden Valley, and now the Kingman Farms is trying to turn this into a farming community. It is not set up to be one. The water that the farming community I lived in was from irrigation, from reservoirs. The town had a separate water system, which was well water, and the Kingman Farms is taking our well water. And we're in the middle of a drought. Common sense, where is it? There is none. Also, I'm very concerned about chemicals and what happens to those chemicals. What are they spreading? It goes into the ground, it goes into the water system, it goes into the air, and it stays. So I am very concerned. Also, too, I will stand out in the back patio and watch when they're farming and that, and the winds come up. And it reminds me of the Dust Bowl. And I'm very concerned. I moved to this area because I like this area, and I hope you are concerned as well. Thank you.
Terry Conger.
Terry Conger, 2334 South Colorado Road, Golden Valley, 86413. I'm not too good at this, but I'm definitely concerned with the water situations myself. I hear all this talk about Rhodes being the boogeyman all of a sudden, not to defend Rhodes. He's a builder, he's not a farmer. He's grading. He might use a lot of water, but anybody who builds in this country anymore should have solar, wind, and gray water built on any home, and that's easily done. The thing I'm worried about is that mine. You can go down to, I think it's Ruben Sanchez down here at BLM, and he'll tell you millions of gallons a day they're taking now, right now, not what Rhodes is going to do. Up to about 5 million gallons a day is what they're taking right now, and you can get that information. That's enough water each day, pretty much, to supply all of Rhodes' 30,000-home plan each day. That's not going to last. I don't think Rhodes is going to get a chance to take that water, and he's almost done grading, he's not going to, I don't think he's going to plant much. The crops in Golden Valley are still laying there. I don't see what they picked, so we definitely can do something about this water, and we need to look into what that mine's doing. They are gobbling up all the water before Rhodes is going to get any of it. But we're still flushing our toilets for drinking water, people. We've got a lot of work to do. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Robert Fenwick.
I have a post office box, but I live out on Long Mountain, Stockton Hill Road, mile post 17. I can see Rhodes's project from my backyard. I left you, folks, a copy of the picture of how Mr. Rhodes is taking care of our water, and the picture's worth 1,000 words. Right now, there are 10 wells out there, and you can see they've turned on the sprinklers. When we talk of watering 7,500 acres, that's over 11 square miles of dirt in the desert that hasn't had water on it for hundreds of years. The law that lets Mr. Rhodes take all the water he wants is bad law, and bad law needs to be fixed. The first thing that must be done is we need to join the AMA, Active Management Area, and maybe we'll get some help. Are we going to let one man ruin the quality of life for thousands of people, or are we going to do something to stop him? The people from the state are here this morning, and I hope when they're through with their presentation, that whatever the Board of Supervisors decides is a wise and smart decision. We have to remember, I don't like what they do in a lot of other places, but I'll guarantee you, you go to California, they would never let you suck 50,000 acre-feet of water out of the ground a year. They wouldn't let you do it in Nevada. And with that, I will say that, remember, once our water is gone, Mojave County and the city of Kingman will never, ever get it back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Last, my friend Mark Shaver.
My name is Mark Shaver. I live at 4054 West Hiller Drive in Meview. Actually, it's Greg Hideout, so I'm at the tail end of that aquifer. I love a good presentation, but what I find lacking about these presentations is the level of public participation in it. A town hall meeting is what we truly need to have this discussion, where I get to hear you, you get to hear me, you ask questions, I ask questions. The same goes with the USGS. I'm very familiar with their method and style of presentation. Mrs. Truni, I remember you. And I always find these presentations lacking because I don't be able, after I hear their expert opinion, I don't get to ask more questions. I don't get to hear your opinion based on the information that you have, because your information is not necessarily the same as mine, and I want to be able to fact-check it myself, to see if I agree with your opinion before you guys vote on anything. And that's where my problem is on today's presentation, because afterwards, it's done, we don't get to ask questions. I want to be able to do that, because I always find it lacking, that I don't get to hear you. Now, every day when I drive up down there on Stockton Hill Road, I see that the, I'm always led to believe that this is supposed to be some underground irrigation system. Okay, he's got a little bit in there, but the rest is not that. It's that pivot irrigation system. So the plan's changing. Every time I read it in the paper, just yesterday's paper, they mentioned how it's an underground GPS irrigation system, high efficiency. And I go out there, and I say, well, wow, that sure doesn't look like it. Well, he did a little part here, but I'm led to believe that this is supposed to be through the whole project. I can't speak for Golden Valley because I don't live out there. Again, my big beef is not we don't have a true town hall meeting, and that's something we need to have for this discussion, so that way we could talk about policies also, because Prop 207 is going to come into play against the MAA. Private property rights versus community assets. You've got to have it. Now, we know we don't have those policies anymore because Ron Walker did away with all of them. How do you fix that? Thank you.
Hey, I want to thank everybody who came down to talk today. Today's presentation was set up at our regular scheduled Board of Supervisor meeting for information, so we can get the facts, go through it, and whatever we decide to do for the community will be done at a different date. But today, we are going to have two presentations, and I'd like to call up the Director of Development Services, Nikant, who's going to introduce the first presenters.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors. Thank you very much. There will be two presentations. One, the first one will be by the United States Geological Survey, and they will present the science for the three major aquifers in Mojave County, and they're going to provide basically the findings of their study, multi-year study, and the water budget. And after that, the Arizona Department of Water Resources will make a presentation on a question, and will answer questions on how to form an AMA, potentially form an AMA, and what are the pros and cons. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to the USGS, if you'd like. Thank you.
Chairwoman and Supervisors, good morning, and thank you for this opportunity to address the board. We appreciate that. My name is Jim Leenhaut, and I'm the Director of the Arizona Water Science Center of USGS. Relatively new to this position, I took this job in October, but I've been involved in oversight of the science we've been doing in this area for a number of years. Just a little bit on USGS. Each state has a USGS office that handles water. Ours is the Arizona Water Science Center. The USGS as an agency is the Department of Interior's Science Agency, and we have a mission to develop scientific information specifically for the purpose of helping resource management decision processes. And if I'm not mistaken, this is one of those opportunities, so we're actually pretty excited about that. USGS is a little unusual in federal agencies in that we really only do one thing, we do science. So we don't do policy recommendations, we don't set policy, we don't do any sort of regulation. That being said, we are certainly available, and part of our job is to explain the science we do, and although we don't do policy recommendations, we certainly work with stakeholders and resource managers to help understand the implications of what various decisions might be. So we are available to provide that help, and that's part of the reason we're here this morning. Just a little bit of background, I'm only going to be up here for a few moments, I'm going to turn the floor over to two of our scientists I've brought along with us. But a little bit on the origin of this work. So around 2000, if I recall correctly, the USGS and ADWR entered into a collaborative cooperative agreement called the Rural Watershed Initiative Projects. The intent of those projects was to develop better knowledge of the hydrology, of the water systems of rural areas in the state where information was relatively lacking. One of those areas was what we call the Northwest Basins, where we are right here. Now, one of those areas was what we call the Northwest Basins, where we are right here. Although this work started with ADWR and USGS, I want to make sure we note that Mojave County and Kingman also collaborated and contributed to the work. There were five fundamental products that came out of this work, and I believe you have paper copies of each of these reports. If you do not, let us know, and we will be happy to get you those reports. But there is a geology map that was created. There was a report that described the occurrence and movement of groundwater in these three basins. There was a report that describes a water budget for the groundwater system of these basins, much in the way one would analyze how money comes in and out of a bank account. This water budget analyzes how water comes in and out of the aquifers. There is a hydrogeologic framework report. Now, one of the problems we scientists have is we often talk in kind of terminology that is difficult to understand, and we do it because it helps us understand and communicate what we're trying to say. We will try to simplify that as much as we can this morning. So when I say a hydrogeologic framework report, I'm referring to an analysis, a report that describes our understanding of what is underneath our feet right here. What happens in an aquifer system when you withdraw water from it depends on the sediments that that water resides in, the rocks that surround it, the depths. All of those things are incorporated in this framework, this hydrogeologic framework, and it's kind of a fundamental piece to understanding water, the flow, what happens when you develop that water resource. And finally, the fifth product is a documentation of an initial groundwater flow model. And a flow model is a piece of software on a computer that draws much of this information together in one place and helps you start to understand a bit of how one action or choice in one place may have effects in some other place. Now, this model is, it's a preliminary model, it's not really intended for doing detailed analysis, but it's a starting point. So with that, I would like to introduce two hydrologists, two scientists that I brought from our Flagstaff office, Margot Truini, who has been here before and who was fundamental to much of the work that we've completed, and Jamie Macy, who also has done work in completing the studies that we've done. And Jamie will actually be doing the presentation this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Supervisors, as Jim said, I'm also with the Arizona Water Science Center, a hydrologist with the United States Geological Survey. And I'm here to talk to you today about the studies that we did here in the Northwest Basins and the Kingman area. And we'll be talking about groundwater conditions in Walupi, Detrital, and Sacramento Valley Basins in northwestern Arizona. And again, just reiterating that this was a cooperative effort between the USGS, Arizona Department of Water Resources, Mojave County, and the city of Kingman. Cooperative effort, all working together to try and understand, as Jim said, what's going on beneath our feet, what's going on with the water beneath our feet. And today, when I talk about the study, I'll be talking about primarily the Walupi Basin, the basin closest here to Kingman. So if you look on the slide, and do those slides advance with the program? And are your slides advancing? Okay, well, the second slide then on the presentation. They're working through it right now. So we'll get through to the second slide of the presentation, and it's a study area. It's looking at where we're at right now.
Now, he's working on.
These specifics of the area that we studied, and Kingman, and looking at the three basins. In the northeastern part of the study area is the Walupi Basin. And we'll be focused on the Walupi Basin today, knowing that there is development, groundwater development, future groundwater developments in the Walupi Basin, in the basin where the majority of groundwater development is currently occurring. The information that I'm going to present today, as I said, is focused on the Walupi Basin, but we have this information for Sacramento Basin and Detrital Basin. So this information is available for all, but as I said, I will focus on Walupi Basin. And here we are here. So as you can see from the cursor, Walupi Basin is this area to the northeast of Kingman. And here we are in Kingman. And just for reference, the Red Lake area is up here to northeast, and the Red Lake area is a part of the Kingman Basin. The Detrital Basin is this northwesterly basin, and then Sacramento Basin is a large basin to the south of Kingman, south and west of Kingman. And with the way I'm going to talk about our studies, as Jim said, there were five USGS products. I'm going to speak about four of those. We're going to start with looking at the groundwater levels, where groundwater is at in the ground itself, and what those levels of the water is, and what we learned from a groundwater study. Then we'll talk about the hydrogeology. And the hydrogeology is understanding the rocks beneath us, the geometry of these basins, and the characteristics of the basins themselves. Then we're going to talk about the water budget. Water coming into the system is recharge, water that's being taken out of the system is groundwater withdrawals, water that's out of the system is evapotranspiration from plants naturally evaporating off of the ground. And then all of that information that we gained from those three studies will work into a groundwater model, an actual computer simulation of the groundwater system. So we'll walk through the talk, talking about the groundwater levels, the groundwater basin, the geometry of those basins, and the characteristics of the basins. Then we'll talk about the water budget, and then the groundwater model. So starting off, we're going to look at the groundwater levels, the groundwater map. And out of this, the product that came out of this study, the first of the four studies looking at groundwater in the Northwest Basins, is the groundwater map. And as you can see, in the Walupi Basin area, the groundwater system primarily moves from the south to the north towards Lake Mead. The same is true for Detrital Basin, from south to north towards Lake Mead. And Sacramento Basin, from north to south, and then to the west, towards the Colorado River system. What's important to note, though, on the groundwater map, is that near the city of Kingman, there is a reversal, whereas most of the water moves from south to north, the water towards the Kingman area actually moves towards Kingman. So we looked at the groundwater levels within the basin. Another important way that we looked at the groundwater levels is the groundwater change, the change in those groundwater levels from 1996 to 2006. And what's represented in this plot, in the cool colors, are areas where groundwater actually increased. The green dots represent areas where groundwater between 1996 and 2006 didn't change at all, it remained relatively constant. And the areas with warm colors, from yellows to oranges to reds, represent areas where groundwater depleted from 1996 to 2006, groundwater depleted anywhere from 5 to 50 feet. And one thing I want to say about these slides that I'm presenting is, all of these figures in these slides are a part of the reports that we have. So as you look through these slides, it's a way to help understand the reports that we have published, the four reports that have come out as the USGS studies. So again, looking at groundwater changes over time, from 1996 to 2006. And if you look in the Kingman area, for instance, you'll see a lot of the oranges and yellow colors, showing the groundwater depleted near the Kingman area from about 5 to 50 feet below land surface. Up towards the Red Lake area, north of the Red Lake area, a number of green dots, showing that groundwater change was relatively constant between 1996 and 2006, north of Red Lake. Just south of Red Lake and Walupi Valley, you'll see some additional blue dots, where groundwater increased in some of the wells over that time period. I know there's some concerns in Sacramento Valley and the Golden Valley area, northern Sacramento Valley, and if you look in that area, a number of the groundwater wells are green in that area along Route 68. And those green values indicate little to no change in groundwater. Another way that we understand and look at groundwater is to look at the withdrawals, the amount of water that's coming out of the ground. And here's a depiction, three graphs of the three basins. The top one is Detrital Valley Basin. And Detrital Valley, about 300 acre-feet a year is withdrawn from the Detrital Valley Basin. Not a lot of groundwater withdrawals compared to the other basins. Moving down to Walupi Basin, you can see that in about the mid-1960s, there was an increase in the withdrawals coming out of the Walupi Valley Basin. And many of the groundwater withdrawals in the Walupi Valley Basin are associated with the city of Kingman, and withdraws with the city of Kingman. In the Walupi aquifer, the entire aquifer, the entire basin system, it reached a maximum right now of about 10,000 acre-feet between 2008, at around 2008. Now, in the Sacramento Valley aquifer, in the mid-1960s to the early 1980s, there was a withdrawal, an increase in withdrawals due to mining. As some of that mining ceased, withdrawals decreased, and we find at the current levels of about 4,000 acre-feet, or at least in 2008, about 4,000 acre-feet of water being withdrawn from the aquifer system. And this is important to us as scientists, because here we look at the groundwater levels in these aquifers, where the groundwater levels are at, how that groundwater moves through the aquifer system, and then how much water is being withdrawn out of the aquifer system. And these were the summaries of the first of the four USGS reports that are associated with groundwater in the Northwest Basins. The next study looked at the basin geometry and the characteristics of the basin, the actual sediments, and how deep the basins were, the types of sediments that were in those basins, and what the geometry of the basin was, to try and understand how much water the basins held. So for instance, if we look at Walupi Basin, and you look at the Walupi sub-basin, one of the important aspects of this program is, not only did we learn that there are three major basins in the northwestern part of our state, but there were also sub-basins within those basins. And that's very important for understanding water. So the colors on this map, the colors describe the depth of those sub-basins. And if you look at the Walupi sub-basin, for instance, there are depths that go to 4,000, almost 4,500 feet of depth in the Walupi sub-basin. In the Kingman sub-basin, for instance, just to the south there of the Walupi sub-basin, depths ranged closer to around 1,500 feet to 2,000 feet in the Walupi sub-basin. So we were able, as scientists, to then characterize how deep those basins were and what their geometries were, and then also understand that there were sub-basins within the larger basins. One of the things that's also important about this are the types of sediments in those sub-basins. So for instance, in the Walupi sub-basin, it's marked with a dashed line. That dashed line illustrates halite and anhydrite. Halite is salt, same kinds of salt that we often use on our table. So understanding that there's a different type of sediment in the sub-basin also tells us about how much water can be held in that sub-basin. Different types of sediment hold different types of water. If you have coarse-grained sediments, for instance, it will hold much more water than a fine-grained sediment. So we, as scientists, characterize the types of sediments in these basins to understand how much water the basins are going to hold, and how much water potentially is going to be held in the sub-basins. What's also important about this characterization is the types of sediments that they are. And as I said, halite, for instance, is salt. Well, it tells us a little bit about the water quality that's going to be found in these sub-basins. And knowing that salt is in a sub-basin versus coarse-grained sediments are in a sub-basin will tell us about the type of water quality that's within those sub-basins. Now, when we look as scientists into the ground, and we try and understand what's underneath our feet, where the water's at, and where the ground is at, and what type of sediments we're looking at, the way that we can do that is initially through well logs. A driller goes out, drills a well, brings those sediments to the surface, and we lay those sediments out, and we look at the sediments, we look at those drill logs, and we can characterize what kind of sediments are there, if they're saturated or if they're unsaturated, and how deep those sediments go down. So if you look on this plot, for instance, you'll see a number of the, kind of the barrels there, the columns. Each one of those represents a well, and we characterize with different colors what kind of sediments were found within those wells. But as scientists, we don't have wells everywhere, and we can't look under the ground everywhere in these basins. So we use tools and instruments that allow us to look under the ground without drilling a well. Those tools are called geophysics. And as a matter of fact, the city of Kingman in Mojave County directly helped fund this type of a study to use geophysical tools to understand what the sediments are doing underneath our feet. So in the top part of this plot, we were able to take those raw geophysical profiles that were flown, it was actually flown by an airplane with some wires wrapped around it that flew over the basins, and we get the raw information. And then as scientists, we translate that information to the bottom plot, the different colors, the blues and the oranges on the bottom plot, to characterize those sediments as coarse-grained, fine-grained, saturated with water, unsaturated, and try and figure out where the sediments are at, so that we can now understand the geometry of the basin, how deep the basins are, and what kind of sediments are inside of those basins. And that's important, because as I said, each different type of sediment will hold a different amount of water. Fine-grained sediments will hold far less water than coarse-grained sediments. It's that space in between the grains that actually holds the water. And so as scientists, we need to understand the geometry, how deep the basins are, and the type of, and the type of sediments in those basins. So based on all those geophysical profiles that were flown, we're able to construct a map that simplifies the types of basins, where the types of sediments, and where in those basins the sediments lie. So for instance, the blue area is representing saturated, coarse-grained material, and the finer gray material, and the pink. And so we can characterize overall in the basin the types of sediments, what the sediments mean, how much water the sediments can hold, and then how big the basins are. And all of this helps us as scientists to understand how much water can be held in these basins. So for instance, I'm, again, I'm going to focus on Walupi Valley Basin. And if we look at the estimated volume, the first column, the estimated total volume, just based on the size of the basin, Walupi Basin could hold about 102 million acre-feet of water, if there were no sediments. But when you put sediments in there, knowing that there are fine-grained, there are coarse-grained, there are saturated sediments, there are unsaturated sediments, where the water is at, once we understand that, in the red circle there, we can see that in Walupi Basin, for instance, there's about 11.4 million acre-feet of water available. That's the total water that is available. And the columns on the right indicate some of the errors that can be associated with these types of measurements, but what's important is around the red circle there, the 11.4 million acre-feet. So now, as a part of our USGS studies, the first one, we understood the water levels, where the water was at, and how the water was moving through the groundwater system. The second study was to understand the basin geometry and the types of sediments to determine how much water could be held within these basins. So we've gone through water levels, where the water's at, and the basin characteristics, the types of sediments, and how much, how deep the basins are, and also the realization that there are sub-basins within these larger basins. So the next USGS report was to take that information and put it into a budget. As Jim said, a budget is just like our accounting budgets within a bank, how much money comes into our bank account and how much money goes out. And so we do that with water. And the way that we look at our basins here, in the Northwest Basins, near the Kingman area, is a simplified model such as this, a simplified budget. Water as precipitation rain is coming down in the area of the mountain fronts, so much of the rain comes down on the mountains and works its way into the groundwater system. Now, the majority of that precipitation in the Kingman area, for instance, is lost to evapotranspiration. That's the water that the plants are taking up on the ground and actually using, and the water that is just evaporating off of the air, off of the ground. And so much of that water in the Kingman area is lost to evapotranspiration. But the water that does make it into the system, down through the mountain blocks, down through the large mountains around us, works its way down into the alluvial fill. And that's what fills up the basins down here in the bottom. It fills up those aquifers that we have in the alluvial basins. So we're going to talk about that water budget, but first, I wanted to show you a comparison of the Kingman area to the Verde area. So for instance, each of these colored lines represents a different time period. So we're looking at different time periods and rain, precipitation in the Kingman area. So looking at Walupi, Detrital, and Sacramento Valley Basins. The three basins have had rain anywhere from about six inches to about 10 inches a year between the three basins. And if we look at the Verde system, the Verde system has had rain at about the rate of about 16 to 20 inches a year. But the stark contrast between these two systems is looking at the recharge, the bottom part of that graph, the actual water that makes it down into the alluvial basins, the recharge to this whole system. It's very, very minimal in the Walupi, Detrital, and Sacramento Valley Basins versus an area like the Verde River with just slightly more precipitation. The Verde River is receiving an extremely large amount more of recharge into the aquifer system. So as I said, it's important to understand recharge, because it all goes back to a water budget, the way that we think about water moving in and out of the system. So as I said, much of the precipitation occurs in the mountain blocks, and so precipitation is coming down into the area, and it's evapotranspirating out of the area. So as you, on the top part of this, top-left part of this plot, precipitation was about 226,000 acre-feet. Evapotranspiration was about 218,000 acre-feet. So only about 18,000 or 8,000 acre-feet is actually making it into the system for recharge. But our understanding here is a whole water budget. Not only do we have water coming into the system, but we have water going out of the system, and that's human infrastructure, for instance, groundwater withdrawals, the water that's coming out of the system. And focusing on Walupi Valley, for instance, the bottom line on this plot is the, in the circle there, the storage change, the minus 5,600 acre-feet. So from 1940 to 2008, looking at the entire water budget, the water coming into the system, the water leaving the system, on an annual basis, Walupi Valley is losing 5,600 acre-feet of water per year, on an annual basis, at the current status of the basin. That is the That is the water budget, the current water budget for this basin. So now we've talked about the water levels and where the water levels are at within the basins. We've talked about the characterization of those basins, how we're able to look at the sediments and understand how much water can be in those basins. And now we've looked at the water budget, how much water is coming into the system and leaving the system, and where that net difference is at within the water budget for the system. And those are the first three USGS studies. What we do with all of that information then is we take all of that and we put it into a computer model, a computer simulation. All of the information about the water levels, the geometry, the basin characteristics, the type of sediments, and the water budget itself, the water that's coming in as recharge, the water that's leaving the system naturally as springs, and from human interface, from wells withdrawing the water, and we put it into a computer model, and we try and learn something about the system. We try and understand what's the system doing and how is the system working because the computer allows us to do that. And the USGS report that talks about this, and the USGS study, was to put together a very simplified model. It's a very simple model that was used to test recharge, for instance, the amount of water that's being rained down onto the mountain blocks and the amount of water that's getting into the system, that actual recharge that's recharging the aquifer systems. So this model was designed to look at recharge. It was also looked, it was also used to test the connection between the larger basins. It was used to test the connection between Walupi, Sacramento, and De Tridle basins, and try and understand that interconnectedness between the basins. Now, when we put together a model, for instance, and this is a display of eight different wells, and what we do with the computer model is we put all the information into a computer system, and we try and match what's happening on the ground today, for instance. And this computer simulation looks at a time period. So each one of those little circles that you see on this computer simulation was a measured water level, where someone physically measured a water level on the ground. And the red line represents the computer simulation. And as scientists, we best try and match that computer simulation to the real world. I want to remind you though, that it is a computer simulation. You can't completely model the real world, but we do the best we can as scientists to mimic the real world. And we use computer simulations such as this to model the real world. If you look in the bottom right plot, for instance, much of those simulations are showing groundwater levels that are rather flat, but in the bottom right plot there, that one particular well, for instance, the computer simulation was able to monitor, able to simulate the groundwater as it depleted over time. And you see the red line goes down just as the groundwater levels go down over time. So this is to show you that we try and mimic, we try and simulate what's happening in the real world with these computer programs. And so why do we need a groundwater model? Well, a groundwater model is an important tool to understand adequate water supply and understand the groundwater system. As I said, from the previous three USGS studies, we were able to take all this information that we had about groundwater levels, the types of sediments, and how much water can fit in the basins, and then the water budget, how much water is coming in, and put it into a computer program. And it lets us look at the system and understand the system through a computer. It can be used for water management plans. It's a great tool for water managers to be able to use to understand potentially scenarios. And that's one of the things that a groundwater model is very strong at doing, is understanding if you were to run scenarios, some what-ifs. What if you were to put a well in one area? What if you were to take out a well? What if we were to have growth in an area? What if we were to have additional groundwater developments in one area based on whatever it is? You can use these computer models to simulate that into the future. With the model that we ran for this area, we ran the current conditions, what's happening right now, or 2008 I should say, so just about right now, and what happened before that. So we ran the model to try and understand what was happening then. This model was not intended to run towards looking at future scenarios. But what would be needed to improve the groundwater model? As I said, this model that we have with USGS, and this is the fourth of the four reports that I talked about today, the model was initiated to understand the current groundwater conditions and what's happening now. Models are very good at trying to understand scenarios and what could happen in the future, but this model wasn't exactly designed for that, and it would need some work to try and understand what's going to happen in the future. More information is needed for this model, and it can be done, but it is not, it is a tool that can be used, but additional information would be needed to add to the model to make it useful for potentially running scenarios in the basins for work that, you know, potentially could be coming up. So in summary, our Rural Watershed Initiative program, there was very little information known about the basins before the USGS was involved with this study. Today, what I spoke about are changes in groundwater levels over time, and how those groundwater levels, how water moves through the subsurface, effects of groundwater withdrawals within each basin, and the amount of groundwater withdrawals that has occurred within each basin, the geometry of the basins and the sub-basins within those basins, the basin characteristics, the type of sediments that are there, and how much water those sediments can hold, the water budget overall, how much water is coming into the system and how much water is leaving the system, and then our preliminary numeric groundwater model, which we talked about why we would potentially use that groundwater model, and what additional work would need to be done to run scenarios to understand what could happen with future developments within the groundwater system in the three basins. So I thank you for your time. I've presented the USGS website that we have that actually, that has a reference to all four of the reports that the USGS has published. There's pictures of all four of the reports, and this link leads to, a link to all four of those reports, in addition to the geologic map that's been produced, and other information that is pertinent to this project is on that website.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions? I have a question, because you keep saying "now," but all these slides and, and yourself said up to 2008, so this is all from 2008?
2008, yes. 2008, and all the work, all of the data collection that we did as a part of this program ended before 2008. So 2008 was the last year of any of the information that went into these reports.
Okay.
I might add that it's taken a number of years after that information was taken to put all these reports together.
There's a time lapse.
Yes, there is, there is a time lapse between when the data can be collected, when the data can then be taken back to the office and analyzed and understood, such as the geophysical method that was used. Taking that information back to the office takes a long time to interpret that information and understand what it means, and then put the information into the reports and publish those reports. So there is a time lag between when the last bit of data can be collected, when that data can be interpreted and understood, and then when that data can actually be published in a report such as these.
All right. Madam Chair, we did have Mojave County, besides having our expertise in, we also contributed money to that, and we did have, an update at one time, a preliminary proposal was brought back to the public before this.
Madam Chairman, may I ask a question? Excellent presentation. I sincerely appreciate USGS coming in and providing this to us. I think it was very valuable. One of the things that you all mentioned is that more modification or more information would be needed to be able to do predictions on your, on your modeling. I would assume that your model's at a certain point that predictions could be made, but they would have some degree of accuracy?
Yes.
One of the questions I would have is, if Mojave County did provide you with a scenario, a future scenario, so that we could possibly give the best prediction that we possibly could with the available information, would that be something that the USGS could conceivably do for us?
Well, as I said, this model that we've produced wasn't intended to run scenarios. And the limitation you have on any model is kind of, is its intention, what it was meant to be used for. And the limitations would be so strong in this model that it's not in a place that scenarios could be run. There are too many limitations on the, within the model itself. So the current model could not be used for running scenarios. It just doesn't have that power to be able to run a scenario within it.
Thank you.
So there are no questions right now?
I have a question. What would need to be done in order to improve the model so scenarios could be run?
Well, with the original model, there were a number of areas with uncertainty. For instance, the Truckston Wash area, and certain properties within the rock units themselves, that although we understand much about the general characterization about the types of sediments, as I said, coarse-grained versus fine-grained, there are still very fine properties within those rocks that we would need to understand to be able to refine the model to make it useful for running the scenarios. And it wouldn't involve a lot of work within a year, for instance. We could have the model running to a point where scenarios could be put into it, and we could produce another report that would, that would show what the scenarios could do. But it would, it would still take just a little bit of extra work to make sure that the model is, the confidence within the model to show what those scenarios are.
I couldn't, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Mike, could we ask our county administrator, Mike Hendricks, to engage with the USGS to figure out exactly what would be needed to improve the model so scenario could be run and report back to the board at a future date with those?
This, I don't know if this is agenda item for action.
Madam Chair, supervisor Johnson, this is really with Board Action, referring it to staff is not Board Action.
I just wanted to have Mike report back to us, bring us the information after he speaks to USGS so we can consider Board Action at a later date.
Will you have this, please tell the audience where they can find this? Will we be able to provide this report to people who are interested, and how they can contact you or see all this stuff?
Yeah, so as, as I said to the audience, if you can flashback to the computer screen here, the website here on the bottom of, of the computer screen is the website that has a reference to all four of the reports and the geologic map, as well as information and data from the USGS. And on that USGS website is contact information to get ahold of us individually, and we are a public entity, we are a public agency, so we are available for all public to call and have questions or need additional information. We can supply that information to you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to ask, do we need to take a little break for, five-minute break? Okay.
Twenty-minute break.
Five-minute break. Maybe the kids need to go.
Yeah.
I think last time they were here was after the.
I can't even get to.
Can you?
...was made by Director's decision. And if you look at the order, the reasons why that was declared to be a subsequent INA was that there were steep declines in groundwater levels, small annual groundwater recharge, which is similar to USGS noted in that kind of comparison slide, that in these three basins there's very small groundwater recharge on an annual basis, and then extensive irrigation. Historically, in the 1950s, there was only about 20,000 acre-feet of irrigation in the Harkawayla INA area. It increased in the 1960s to over 200,000 acres. And then it kind of idled back. In 1981, when this requests were made, there was about 125,000 acres under irrigation. So it had increased about 100,000 acres in that 30-year time period. Depths to water, the USGS talked about that. In parts of the Harkawayla INA, groundwater levels were very low, about 17 feet below land surface in the 1950s. And then other areas of the INA were about 240. Those had declined to 140 feet below land surface in the shallower areas, and down to deeper than 650 feet below land surface in the other areas. So those were kind of the criteria that were taken into consideration when that INA was formed. In 1988, there was a request for the Department of Water Resources to evaluate conditions in the Upper San Pedro to determine if an ANA or AMA was needed. The determination was made in 1988 that it did not meet the statutory criteria for a Director's determination. But they did say that they'd come back and they'd look at it again. So it was reviewed again in 2001. There was about two years' worth of work and data that were collected and work that was done in the Upper San Pedro. And ultimately, it came out that AMA-type practices were not necessary in the Upper San Pedro. The next one was Beaver Dam Wash, the Littlefield area, and that was in 1990. There was an earlier comment regarding transportation groundwater out of state in the 2005, 2006 timeframe. There had been an original request in 1990 for a similar thing to happen. And so entities in that area proposed creation of an AMA to restrict groundwater pumping, and the reason for that was to prevent transportation out of state. I'm sorry to say that we could not find a lot of information about this. There's no one left at the agency that was here then. So we're not, we're, it's unknown to us how far the process went, but ultimately, an AMA was not created in the area. However, they did kind of have enough local support that they also quashed the groundwater transportation, so maybe that's why they just didn't need it. For the Sacramento Valley area, in 1993, there was a request made by, I believe it was Pioneer Valley Water Company, and they requested that DWR do an investigation and see if the criteria were met, or if creation of an AMA was necessary. There was a report that came out in 1994 by the ADWR, a staff-level report. And at that point in time, it was determined that creation of AMA practices were not necessary. And it also noted that there was not necessarily the political desire to move forward with it. The Santa Cruz AMA was actually created by Arizona Legislature in 1994. It wasn't creation of a new AMA. It was merely kind of the carving out. The two, it was formerly part of the Tucson AMA, and it had unique circumstances. There were binational implications with Mexico and the Santa Cruz River coming in. And they had a different water management problems than they had in the, in the more northernly part of the Tucson AMA. So they split those out. So that one was created legislatively in 1994, but it wasn't new area that was determined to be ANA. It was just out of an already existing area. So I'm going to turn it over now to Ken Slawinski. He's going to go through the legal things associated with creation of either a subsequent AMA or an INA, and then I'll come back and do kind of the closing slides. So, thank you.
Madam Chair, Supervisors. My name is Ken Slawinski. I'm the Chief Legal Counsel for the Department of Water Resources. 1980 Groundwater Management Act was passed by the Legislature to address groundwater overdrafts that were occurring throughout the state. And as part of that legislation, the Legislature created two types of management areas. The first is an active management area where groundwater use is extensively regulated, and most types of groundwater use within an AMA is regulated. And the second is an irrigation non-expansion area, or INA, where only irrigation use is regulated. The Legislature, through the passage of the 1980 Groundwater Management Act, created four AMAs and two INAs. And also included in the Groundwater Management Act authorization for the creation of additional AMAs and INAs, referred to in the statutes as subsequent AMAs and subsequent INAs. So I'll go over the nuts and bolts for creating both types of areas. The first area that I'll talk about is a subsequent AMA. Under the existing statutes, a subsequent AMA may be created in one of two ways, either by an order of the Director of the Department of Water Resources following a public hearing, or by a vote of the registered voters residing in the area that's proposed to be an AMA. And I'll describe the process for establishment of an AMA by the Director first. The Director may establish an area that consists of at least one groundwater basin, but it could include more than one groundwater basin. The area cannot include less than a groundwater basin, however, for the subsequent AMA. In order to establish a groundwater basin or basins as a subsequent AMA, the Director must find that one of three criteria exists. Either, number one, that AMA practices are needed to preserve existing groundwater supply for future needs; number two, that land subsidence in the area is, or fishering is endangering property or groundwater storage; and number three, that groundwater use is causing actual or threatened water quality degradation. If the Director believes that one of those three criteria exist, then the Director must call a public hearing to consider whether to declare the area as an AMA, and also to consider the boundaries of the AMA and any sub-basins within the AMA. The Director must give public notice of the hearing in a newspaper once a week for two consecutive weeks, and then the public hearing must be held within 30 and 60 days after the first publication. At the public hearing, the Director must present factual data in support of creating the AMA, and any person in the public can appear and submit evidence either for or against creation of the AMA. Within 30 days after that public hearing, the Director must issue findings, either determining that an AMA should be created or that it should not be created. If the Director determines that the AMA should be created, the Director must issue an order designating the AMA, and then publish notice of the findings and the order in a newspaper, again, for, once a week for two consecutive weeks, and then the AMA would become effective on the final publication. The Director's decision, however, is subject to requests for review or rehearing, and subject to judicial review also. The second way that a subsequent AMA may be created is through a vote of the registered residents, voters that are residents of the proposed AMA. The area that can be designated as an AMA through a vote is a groundwater basin. Only a groundwater basin, not more than one basin, and not less than a basin. In order to have the election, a petition must be filed with Board of Supervisors, signed by at least 10% of the registered voters in the groundwater basin that is proposed to be an AMA. Upon receipt of that petition, the Board of Supervisors must call an election within 60 and 90 days after receiving, I'm sorry, call an election, and then the election must be held within 60 to 90 days after it's called. During the proceedings, either for an election or the public hearing process by the Director, during those proceedings, no new lands may be irrigated within the area that's proposed to be an AMA. If an AMA is then created, either by order of the Director or through an election, certain things must occur after that. The first one is that the Director, within 30 days after the AMA is created, must establish a management goal for the AMA. And then within two years after creation of the AMA, the Director must adopt a management plan for the AMA that contains provisions designed to achieve the management goal for the AMA. The Governor must appoint what's called GUAC, Groundwater Users Advisory Council, consisting of five persons within the AMA that represent groundwater users in the area, to advise the Director on groundwater issues and to make recommendations regarding issues such as the management plan. If a subsequent AMA is created, then certain mandatory regulations would apply in the area. And this slide has a list of those regulations, and I'll go over them quickly. The first is that no one within the AMA can use groundwater from a non-exempt well, and that's a well that has a pump with a maximum capacity greater than 35 gallons per minute, without either a groundwater right or a groundwater withdrawal permit. Any person who was using groundwater at the time of designation of the AMA is entitled to get a grandfathered groundwater right that allows them to continue pumping for the use that they were making at the time of the designation of the AMA. And in certain cases, they can change the use. If it's for a non-irrigation use, they can change the type of use. They're limited to the, for a non-irrigation use, the maximum amount that was used in any one year during the five years preceding the initiation of the designation proceedings. If it's an irrigation use, they can continue irrigating the lands that were irrigated during that five-year period, subject to conservation requirements. There are restrictions on exempt wells, those wells that have a pump with a maximum capacity less than 35 gallons per minute. Only one exempt well can be used for the same use at the same location unless there were more than one being used at the time the AMA was created. Also, for new exempt wells, there's a limit of 10 acre-feet per year that can be used for a purpose other than domestic or stock watering. All new wells to be drilled within the AMA, non-exempt wells, must apply for a well permit from the Department and must demonstrate that they will not have an unreasonable impact on other wells in the area. And under the rules adopted by the Department, that essentially means that the person proposing to drill the well must show that withdrawals from the well during the first five years will not have more than a 10-foot decline on any neighboring wells in the area. Also, that they will not cause contaminated groundwater from a wharf or circle of site to move to another well. All non-exempt wells within an AMA must be metered. All persons withdrawing groundwater from a non-exempt well in an AMA must file an annual report with the Department, listing the amounts of groundwater withdrawn from the well. Within an AMA, there are regulations on new subdivisions, those lands that are subdivided into six or more parcels. They must demonstrate to the Department that there is a 100-year assured water supply for the subdivision, and that the groundwater use, if there's groundwater use involved, will be consistent with the management goal of the AMA. And for the existing active management areas, that means that very little groundwater can be used to support the subdivision. But whatever the management goal would be, that would be established for an subsequent AMA would be the goal that would be applicable. Also, there are restrictions on filling and refilling new bodies of water used for scenic landscape or recreational purposes, if those bodies of water exceed 12,320 square feet. What that means is essentially effluent must be used to fill those bodies of water, unless the body of water is used for recreation that's open to the public and owned by a public entity, such as the county or city. There are certain groundwater transportation laws that are applicable to AMAs that aren't applicable to areas outside of the AMAs. I don't think that there are any that really are significant to this area. Groundwater users must comply with any applicable conservation requirements established by the Director. For municipal providers, that means that they must comply with gallons-per-capita-per-day limits, or enter into what's called the non-per-capita conservation program, in which they would agree to implement certain specific conservation measures. For irrigation uses, within an AMA, there are no new acres allowed to be irrigated, and only those that were irrigated during the five years preceding the initiation of the designation of the AMA can be irrigated with any water. There are two important exceptions to that. One, lands can be brought into new irrigation with surface water rights that were established prior to the designation of the AMA. And number two, lands that were not actually irrigated during that five-year period before the establishment of the AMA may be irrigated and are deemed to have been irrigated during that five years if substantial capital investment was made by the owner of the lands for subjugation of the land for an irrigation use. And the statutes provide that that could include the drilling of onsite wells, or the construction of onsite irrigation distribution facilities for the land. Next, I'll turn to designating a subsequent irrigation non-expansion area. The statutes currently allow a subsequent INA to be created in only one way, and that's by order of the Director. There is no provision allowing an INA to be created by a vote of the residents of the proposed INA. The Director may include an area in an INA that's not smaller than a groundwater sub-basin, and may not include an area that's smaller than a groundwater sub-basin, but the area could be larger than a groundwater sub-basin. In order to designate an area as an INA, the Director must find two things. One, that insufficient groundwater to provide a reasonably safe supply for irrigation of the lands at a current, at current rates of withdrawal exist, and that establishment of an AMA is not necessary. The proceedings to establish an INA by the Director can be initiated in one of two ways. First, the Director, on the Director's own initiative, can determine that an INA should be established, and then call for a public hearing. The second way is that the residents of the proposed INA may submit a petition to the Director. And the petition must be signed by either at least 25 irrigation users of groundwater in the proposed INA, or at least a fourth of the irrigation users of groundwater in the proposed INA, or at least 10% of the registered voters residing within the proposed INA. If the Director, on the Director's own initiative, decides that an INA should be established, or if the Director receives a petition signed by the appropriate number of residents of the proposed INA, the Director will hold a public hearing to consider whether to designate the area as a subsequent INA. The Director must give notice of the hearing in a newspaper, publish that notice at least once for two consecutive weeks. And the hearing must be held between 30 and 60 days after the first publication. The Director must, at that public hearing, support, present factual data either in support of the INA, if the Director initiated the proceeding, or evidence either in support of or in opposition to the INA, if the Director initiated the proceeding as a result of a petition being filed with the Director. After the public hearing, the same as the hearing for the creation of an AMA, the Director must issue findings, and if the Director determines that a subsequent INA should be established, the Director must issue an order creating the INA, and then publish the findings and order in a newspaper for two consecutive weeks. And then the formation would be effective on the second publication. During the pendency of the proceeding, similar to the proceedings for an AMA, no new acres may be brought into irrigation. I have one more slide, if, there it is. The regulations that apply within an AMA are much less restrictive than in an AMA. There are meeting requirements for all non-exempt wells used for irrigation purposes, and those non-exempt wells used to withdraw more than 10 acre-feet per year for a non-irrigation purpose. Annual reports must be filed with the Department of Water Resources by all persons withdrawing groundwater from a non-exempt well. And then the most significant requirement is that, in an INA, no new lands may be brought into irrigation. Again, with the two exceptions that were applicable to AMAs. You can irrigate new lands with a surface water right that was established before creation of the INA, and any person who has invested substantial capital into subjugating the lands for an irrigation purpose may irrigate those lands, even though they weren't irrigated during the five years before creation of the INA. And the purpose of the substantial capital investment exception is that courts have held that persons who make a substantial capital investment in land during the laws that were in effect when the investment was made can continue to make the use of the land that they made the investment for. So the Legislature recognized that and created that exception. That concludes my portion of the presentation, unless there are any questions.
There was a list of powers that an AMA would have if one was formed. Would I be correct in assuming that the county has no such powers?
I think that would be a correct assumption. If the state has those powers and those are, I guess I could say delegated to the Department of Water Resources, that there's probably a pretty good argument that that preempts the field.
Right. So, for example, if we thought a subdivision lacked adequate groundwater, the county could do nothing except refer it to the Department?
Well, there is one exception, and that is the exception. The, I think it was in 2007, the statutes were amended to allow the County Board of Supervisors of a county to put in a mandatory adequacy requirement, which would require all subdividers to show that they have a 100-year adequate water supply. The only difference between an adequate water supply and assured water supply is there's no management goal that has to be met. And so there's no requirement that the subdivider show that its groundwater use would be consistent with a management goal. All they would have to show is that there is a physical supply available.
Right. And the, that lone power that we have does not apply to large irrigation farms, for example?
That's correct.
Only subdivisions where people are building houses and commercial buildings and things of that nature?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have one question. Sir, where would a person pick up these petitions or identification of material needed for petitions, if they were going to put a petition out to qualify for the election?
That's something that the Department of Water Resources would not control or regulate. That would be the county Board of Supervisors' role, I believe. So it would be similar to any petition that would be brought to the County Board of Supervisors. I'm not aware that that's ever been done, so I'm not, you know, real familiar with the procedure that would be followed, but it wouldn't be something that the Department of Water Resources would control.
Just trying to think ahead of some of the questions that the audience may have. But thank you very much.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, I want to thank the Department of Water Resources and the US Geological Survey. Thank you very much for traveling here, and it was very, very enlightening. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Chairwoman, Jerry was going to have some concluding remarks.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Let's bring her up.
Sorry.
That's okay.
And I can go ahead and speak without them. We did want to put forth the information to the Board of Supervisors that, obviously, like I said, we've only just recently heard about this at the Department, but kind of at an initial review, it, based on initial review, it does not appear that the criteria for the Director to designate a subsequent AMA or INA have been met. Of course, there hasn't been extensive study into that, but at first blush, it doesn't appear to be, there's really no significant changes. If you look at the current uses from the 1994 report, and although it was done in 1994, the values in that report fall within the values that were identified by the USGS, even with regard to projecting water uses in '94 out through 2040. They came up with about 12,000 acre-feet of use, and the USGS study used about 9,800 acre-feet of use in the Walupi Valley. So there hasn't been a lot of significant growth and that sort of thing that's caused a lot of change in the amount of water that people use in the area. So there hasn't been a significant difference since 1994. And as I said, the current USGS studies have similar supplies and demands. So the slide shows some options, and those are basically that AMA designation may be pursued by vote, or the AMA or INA designation may be pursued legislatively. But we did just want to bring up the note regarding existing irrigation use, or those for which, those acres for which substantial capital investment have already been made. So even if the AMA designation came in a week from now, some of the things that have been on the ground would be grandfathered in.
Okay. Just to clarify, when we say some of the things that are on the ground which may be grandfathered in, we're talking about Mr. Rose's current farming activities?
Right. And the extent of that, it would not be known. Looking back through paperwork, when they established initial AMAs, it took years sometimes for them to work through the entities who made applications for grandfathered rights on substantial capital investment. So there had, there was pretty extensive analysis, so not knowing how much that may be.
Right. So if it was determined at a later date that he's made a substantial capital investment, he'd be grandfathered in anyway?
For those acres for which that determination has been made. And then just to, if you had any more questions, but I did just want to let you know, I gave this PowerPoint presentation to Christine, and she was going to post it on the Board of Supervisors webpage. We'll also post it on the ADWR webpage, which is just azewater.gov. It'll be on our Hot Topics, easy to find, and I'll make sure that they put my name under that. So if anybody has any additional questions, just like the USGS, we're a public agency, feel free to email or call at any time.
Thank you again. Thank you very much. Okay. That concludes our presentations for today. And now we are going to move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, items 5 through 28, will be considered as a group, enacted upon by one motion minus any pulled items for discussion. Do we have any items, Supervisors?
16 and 25.
16, 25. Supervisor Moss?
None.
None.
Okay.
And the Chair would make a motion to approve consent, items 5 through 28, minus 16 and 25.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, item 16. Approve transferring 300,000 from general fund contingency to general administration mental health to cover the remainder of fiscal year 2014 mental health expenditures.
Madam Chair, if I could have Mr. Timko from our Finance Department explain how much money we've spent so far, and why we need to give another $300,000?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, at this point in time, we began this year with a budget in that line item of $600,000. We crossed that threshold last week. That precipitated the request for an additional $300,000 that we calculate to be our estimate of the balance for, to cover this fiscal year.
And this money covers what exactly?
This is general fund money that covers the folks that have to go to the Arizona State Hospital for...
Sexually violent prisoners?
It's sexually violent, and it's seriously mentally ill, and the mentally ill.
And we're covering these because this used to be covered by the, part of the state, and now we're picking it all up?
Portion of this, sir, is, is covered by the state. In one instance, they pay 50%, and in the other instance, we pay 100%. This is also a, an area that in the FY15 budget, we were given the authority, the counties were given the authority to use any source of funds under the jurisdiction of the Board to cover these expenses. That only equates to about 200,000 of the 600 that we've spent so far.
But these are, in past, these are bills that we didn't have, correct? Not totally.
If you could repeat the question.
It, these are bills that in the past, we didn't totally have.
Not in total. Two of the, three, the state used to pay, one of them, we are now paying 100% of, the other one, we're paying 50% of.
That's all I had, that's all, that's what I'm saying. But also, if the Board has any questions, I'd make a motion to approve. Take the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number 25. Approve the Treasurer's return check program and restore the process of handling, collecting, and clearing return checks to each individual county, department, and district.
Is the Treasurer coming down? I can't see.
Oh, she is. We have the Treasurer, Cindy Cox, coming down. Come on down.
I guess the question I have, I can understand where you're coming from. I don't know if staff has a recommendation, but if your backup was saying that sometimes checks are returned and then they're collected, and you're not getting notified, which, you know, throws your things off, but some of these checks go back from the backup you gave quite a few years ago. I don't know that, I guess, what is staff's recommendation on this? I would think one place would be good. If we have a check that's not there, then the attorney's office files the appropriate charges, and we move on from there. But we shouldn't have checks that are sitting around for years that haven't been collected. I didn't see a whole lot of input from our staff besides the treasurer.
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, you know, generally, it's my understanding that the treasurer has collected these delinquencies in the past and has run into some difficulty in doing so. Because let's say if planning and zoning has a fee, has a charge, it's difficult for the treasurer's office to take up the flag, take up the cause, and then justify why we would need reimbursement or try to collect that money. It did make sense on the surface, and I didn't look into it in that much detail, but it did make sense on the surface to refer those checks back to the department that was levying those fees for them to attempt to collect it because they would be able to provide better justification than the treasurer would.
I don't know if the other board members had a chance to look at the length of time that those checks were sitting there. That's what bothers me, and I don't know by just saying we're giving it back to staff that we're going to have any difference. And there needs to be a policy or an overall look at how we process checks or...
And I think that part of it is that, as Mr. Hendricks had stated, we don't have the clout, we don't have the pull to be able to call the, for example, with Public Works or Development Services. They have the ability to call the person who wrote the check and say, "We're pulling your permit. You're not getting a permit. You're not going to, we're not going to do anything." Because they know this person, they're a builder, whoever, that they can go out and say, "You wrote us a bad check. We're not taking any of your checks anymore. It's not like that." It's more of a, "Well, this check is bad," and we send them a little note, and they understand that the check is bad, and they do whatever they have to do on their part. And if the person comes in and goes to get another permit, or the person comes in to pay another bill, or whatever, how does the department know, other than going back and looking, which I don't know if that happens, I don't believe that it does, and that's why we have checks sitting on the books for years.
I guess we have a bad check program at the county attorney's office, so why aren't we just immediately turn these over to the county attorney for prosecution? Mr. Ekstrom?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, we do have a bad check program, and that's really, really presented one of the problems is, for example, if Public Works sends a bad check to the treasurer's office, and treasurer starts processing it, in the meantime, somebody comes to Public Works and pays them, takes care of the bad check, we never know. And in at least two instances I can think of, we issued warrants to people on checks that they already made good with Public Works. So in terms of just communicating these things among the departments, it seems to make sense for the bad check program.
And this has led to us having the instance where a young woman who is a citizen was arrested and taken to jail for a bad check that she paid.
Shouldn't have wrote a bad check the first time. That's all I had. I don't, I don't know if I agree with the idea.
So do you think that this is going to solve all of this?
I think that it puts the onus on the department and also the power back to the departments to be able to collect that money, and when they do, they'll present it to us in a way that makes sense to us. We don't necessarily keep track of everything. We let them know, "Hey, you have a bad check. Here's the check. Here's the information." Not the check physically, because we don't get physical checks anymore, but, you know, "Here's the check. You guys decide where it belongs. You account for it appropriately, and then when it's paid off, they account back to us." Then we're not keeping anything on our books separately.
Was this ever done like that before? Because you said return to the old way. Was this how it used to be done?
It was.
And did it work that way? I mean, did it work the way she's saying? If it goes back, do you have staff? Do you have a means to oversee it?
Madam Chairman, I think conceivably the reason we've got such a delinquent checks, and it's probably not the norm, it's probably the exception, but the reason that there was such a delinquency on a couple of the checks was because there wasn't a good process through the treasurer's office to redeem that check. And like what Ms. Cox said, if, when I was at Public Works and Development Services, we would have no problem following through with that and actually going through a process and probably expediting, being able to get some sort of an action on a bad check or a bad payment. Because they're permitting through us, if they want to continue to permit through us, you know, we would have the authority to call that marker in, to call that money in, and try to get those issues resolved, probably in a more expedited way. And it's, I don't think it's something that I would see Nick or Steve objecting to, or, you know, I haven't talked to Patty about environmental fees, but I think that's probably where it should lie, the responsibility of the department levying those fees.
Okay.
And the reason why I wanted to bring it to the board is because it's something that the board had set up in a board action agenda item years ago, and I wanted to make sure that the board had input at this point. But I did bring it to the managers' meeting and ask all the managers that were there how they felt about it, and there was no pushback at all.
Why was it changed in the first place? Was it just the will of the board at that time?
That's the way it was.
What year was that? Do you know?
I have no idea. I don't have the paperwork.
Okay.
At least five years ago, is my understanding.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody other questions?
Not guilty. Most are approved. Take the motion.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right, public hearings. Number twenty-nine, I'm opening the public hearing. Discussion and possible action. Adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution number 2014-063, amendment to Board of Supervisor Resolution number 97-3, setting forth a zoning use permit for a private landing strip and airplane hangar on Assessor's Parcel number 120-22-044 through -048 in an AR 36A agricultural residential 36-acre minimum lot-sized zone to amend the legal description to include Assessor's Parcel number 120-22-052 and 120-22-006, and to clarify and add to the uses allowing by the zoning use permit in the Havasu Heights vicinity of Mojave County, Arizona. And the commission recommended approval by a unanimous vote. Anyone wish to speak to this? Okay, I close the public hearing.
Pledge.
Oh, oh, I'm so sorry. You're right. You did. I am very sorry. Michael Centafont. There are a couple of people signed up for this. What?
Samuel. While I'm opposed to it.
I apologize, Mr. Centafont.
Okay, my name is Mike Centafont. I was formerly the Havasu judge, now retired. I resided in Havasu Heights for 19 years, and in the county 40 years. And reading the Planning and Zoning Commission's report, unanimous report, the applicant has met all the technical requirements of notice, but I feel that notice is totally inadequate for the community members of Havasu Heights. At a bare minimum, due process requires that the property owners that are affected by applicant's amendment be given notice and an opportunity to be heard before an impartial commission. Affected property owners should be afforded an opportunity to present their views and propositions. The commission can then make a knowledgeable and fair decision when they have additional facts before them. Now, I raise this issue because the activity and modifications contemplated by the applicant are not contained within his property. It involves aircraft. And so these modifications are designed to accommodate more aircraft and increase ground and air activity. Now, the residents of the Havasu Heights community, which I'm a member of, are one-half mile away, and will be subjected to low-flying aircraft, and our peaceful and quiet enjoyment of our property will be disturbed. Now, I believe that this, and I ask you to consider this, the Havasu Heights community should be given notice of this amendment, so to allow the commission to make a decision with all viewpoints expressed. As presently constituted, the Havasu Heights residents will have their property rights diminished without notice and an opportunity to voice their viewpoints. No notice was given to Havasu Heights residents, just to the 300-foot restriction, and I'm not arguing about that. That was done. So I asked the board today to deny the amendment or to send the amendment back to the Planning Commission and ask for rehearing with proper notice to Havasu Heights residents, so that they fully understand what's happening. Because no one knows, none of us have gotten any notice on this. Now, during the 20 years, 19 years that I've lived there, I've witnessed acrobatic biwing flying over my house, low-flying aircraft, noisy aircraft, and this is that area, the sheriff had the big drug bust. And so, I mean, I'm not in favor of going forward with this, and I think just in a due process matter, I ask you to send it back and renotice everybody.
Okay, thank you very much. We have Ms. Terri Allen signed up.
Hi, my name is Terri Allen. I represent SBC Inc., we're a general contractor located in Lake Havasu City, Arizona. I'm asking that you deny this rezone application also, due to the fact that Mr. Cox never received proper grading permits, or he has impeded a national, impeded a U.S. waterway by filling in a wash on the property. I've contacted the flood control, and they, in fact, have gone out and determined that this has been done. I am in communication with the Army Corps of Engineers as, like I said, he has impeded the natural flow of a U.S. waterway. He has not obtained any grading permits. He has constructed this crosswind runway. No engineering, no, nothing has been brought up. I'm asking that this go backwards. I'm also very concerned about planning and zoning approving this unanimously without even him having the proper permits and procedures in place for the county, or the state of Arizona for that matter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from Planning and Zoning wish to?
Madam Chairman, if I may just add to these comments that the Development Services Department received two complaints last week, one by the Building Division, that there was grading going on without a grading plan, and they inspected the site, and they determined that there is some minimal grading in one of the washes, trying to level out for the runway, and the property owner was notified that he will have to get a grading permit for that, because it's over 100 cubic yards, and so, but he will have time to comply with that and provide a grading plan if he wants to continue with that grading. The other complaint was received by the Flood Control District. There's an Arizona law, basically, that prohibits restricting the flow of washes, and there's a minor wash that goes through, crosses that proposed runway, there was some filling into that wash. Also, the statute provides that anybody that is damaged by that activity may file a civil action against, and the proper, basically, the wash would flow even if it's filled up, but it would flow the same direction, and it would end up on BLM land, and we didn't see any potential for damage at that time, but there's, you know, anybody could file a lawsuit. Flood Control District typically doesn't get involved on private properties any further than that, and we notified the complaining party of that.
Okay, was proper notification given to the residents?
Yes, on the building permit to do grading, the property owner was notified by a letter, and we assume that when he receives that letter, he will come back and contact us for a grading permit.
Okay, are there any questions?
I have a question. Mr. Hunt, was there anybody that showed up in opposition to this at the P&amp;Z hearings?
Excuse me, sir, would you repeat it?
Was there anyone who showed up at P&amp;Z hearings in opposition, was this brought up before the commissioners?
Yes, yeah, there were opposition, yes.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Madam Chair, if I make a comment? Early on in my first year as representing District Five, I ran afoul of an airport subdivision, and Bill Ekstrom shared with me many of my adventures in that area. And so I'm going to give you my personal viewpoint of what came out of that incident so I can try to apply my reasoning to this incident. And what happened is that a subdivision was, became an airpark. People owned airplanes and parked their airplanes in big garages, and they took off down a privately-owned runway, and they flew. And over time, subdivisions filled in to what used to be empty desert and normal homes who, if they, you know, came out there, looked at a nice lot, bought it, had it built on, they might not notice until they lived there 24/7 that their airplane's going off at 5:00 a.m. in the morning. And some of these people are unhappy because they were living in a subdivision which was very close to this airpark, and they didn't know, many of them did not know, until they actually started living there, as opposed to just looking at the home and buying it. And that has made me somewhat sensitive to landowners and homeowners, which are within a fairly close proximity to these airparks, and if the Havasu Heights neighborhood didn't know that this was going in, well, they're going to find out very soon when these planes start flying over their houses at 5:00 a.m. And I kind of agree with Michael Centafont that if we didn't give the Havasu Heights neighborhood notice that this was going on, so they could have some input, and that maybe the Planning and Zoning Commission and this board could look at the owner and ask the owner, "Where is your flight patterns? Where are you going to be flying at?" So that we can protect the homeowners in that particular area from this problem, and maybe we need to look at it a little more deeply. Because otherwise, I guarantee you, I will be having this exact same adventure with Mr. Ekstrom very shortly. I think it's a bullet we can dodge if we send it back to the Planning and Zoning for rehearing with notice to the Havasu Heights residents with particular emphasis as to what the flight patterns out of this airpark will be.
Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll take the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Onwards. Number thirty. Open public hearing. Discussion and possible action. Adoption of the 2009 FDA Model Food Code to be effective July 1, 2014, which will benefit the health and welfare of the residents of Mojave County. Anyone wish to speak to this? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Any discussion? Or motion?
I move that we approve item thirty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thirty-one. There's an A and a B. I'm open the public hearing. Public comments only regarding the FY 2014 CDBG projects. Now I do this on its own? Any discuss, I'm opening the public hearing. Any discussion? Do I close it for A before going on to B? Okay, closing. Public hearing. Okay, now thirty-one B is discussion and possible action. Adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution number 2014-054, authorizing the submission of applications for FY 2014 state community development block grant funds, regional account RA $585,806, and state special project account SSP for $300,000, and authorize the chairman of the board to sign applications, certifications, and forms or... of the Board to sign applications, certifications, and forms as required by the Arizona Department of Housing. Anyone wish to discuss this? Okay. Any comments?
I move that we approve item 31B.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. 32. I'm opening the public hearing. Discussion and possible action. Declare California Drive from Painted Rock Drive to 180 feet east of Mano Drive coincident with the easterly boundary of Section 27 in Township 24 North, Range 15 West, as a county highway for the purpose of acceptance of said roadway into Mojave County's tertiary road maintenance system as an unsurfaced road. Anyone wish to speak to this? 32. I'm closing the public hearing. Anyone?
I move that we approve item 32.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Carried. 33. I'm opening the public hearing. Discussion and possible action to endorse the Arizona Department of Revenue application for bingo license submitted by the Golden Shore Civic Association. Anyone wish to speak to this? Seeing none, closing the public hearing.
I move that we approve item 33.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Okay. We're done with the public hearing and on to our regular agenda. Number 34. Exec, oh, no, no, we already did that. So we're moving on to 35. Discussion and possible action. Adopt Resolution Number 2014-066, authorizing the installation of a R2-1 25 mile per hour speed limit sign on eastbound Heights Boulevard immediately east of Skyview Drive where the unsurfaced Heights Boulevard traverses a residential district in ARS 28-701B2, establishes such minimum speed limit and further approve modification of existing maintenance and protection of traffic across 1 Heights Boulevard immediately east of Rice Drive and 2 Rancho Vista Drive immediately south of Heights Boulevard to provide R11-2 road closed sign and full width barricade of the traveled way in accordance with the county adopted manual on uniform traffic control devices.
I move that we approve item 35.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. 36. Discussion and possible action. Accept the Horizon 6 Trail Report for discussion and possible further action. We continue this by our board from our April 7, 2014 meeting.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
At the last meeting, I asked for additional time so I can go actually walk the trail. Unfortunately, things became chaotic and I never walked, actually walked the trail. And so I'd like to continue it until the next meeting.
Okay. But before then, and she's been waiting patiently, I did it again. I'm so sorry. Mary Roy, come on down. Mary Van Roy, I'm so sorry.
Thank you, Madam Angus and the supervisors. I would just like to speak one more time for the people who signed our petition, the 380 signatures we have. And every person who signed had a copy of the map with a proposed trail. And I would also, I've given copies to all the supervisors. The other one is the newspaper wrote a very nice piece about why we should have the Horizon 6 Trail. Petitioners have the right idea and the supervisors have an obligation to assure that this massive flood control project and any other county projects don't reduce public access to public lands. And one thing that came out of the report that Travis did was about the safety issues we have with our streets and roads. And on June 13th, my husband and I did attend a Public Works Traffic Control meeting. And they did come in and do some difference with signage and that, but we were asking to have yellow stripes put down the middle of the roads, which had been done years ago just by my request. And now it's an issue that has to go before many different people. So there are some, some things that we could actually do to make our neighborhood safer, which has nothing to do with our trail, but with our road issues, our hills and our lack of view and no shoulders. And there's a lot of things that hopefully we can work on. I'd just like to say that we're a very horse-friendly community and the use of the non-motorized trail for access to public lands for the future of our young riders. Now, I ride with all older ladies. We're all retired 15 years or more. But I'm looking at the future for the children and the people who live in that community. We do feel it is a horse-friendly community and we've used that wash area that now is the channel. And we may not be able to get everything we want, but I think we can negotiate and work with and cooperate and maybe come up with some ideas for some access that we used to have. I would appreciate any attention put to this. And we're not in any big rush. Summer's come. Our horses are going back to the mountains, so we won't be riding in the hot weather anyway. But it would be nice if at least May by fall, we could at least continue the conversation. I'd really appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I did want to say, I did talk to Mayor Nixon and Larry Didion of the city, of Lake Havasu City, about annexation because I thought maybe that's our solution. And they're very supportive, just like the newspaper. Our community is very supportive of it. But we're just waiting on the issues with the county. So thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you for your patience. Okay. So is there any action or anything we have to do with this?
Madam Chair, I move that we continue item 36 for a period of, until the next board meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Number 37. Discussion and possible action. The draft Mojave County personnel policies and procedures document presented to the board at their April 7, 2014 meeting. Before we start this, there seems to have been an administrative snafu on my part because I have, I have never seen these. I'm not saying they didn't get there. I'm saying I've never seen them. So for the interest of time, I'm going to ask that we table this.
Second.
If I have the time to look at it, is that okay?
Absolutely.
I apologize. Okay. Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? 38. Discussion and possible action. The proposed county morgue. Discuss.
I believe the current system is working. I don't want to change it.
Madam Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors, staff recommendation is if we're going to consider a building project, it probably should be considered through our capital budgeting process and not individually. So what staff is recommending is that if the board wanted to go forward with considering the construction of a morgue, please direct staff to come up with a new capital building project and also identify an extended capital building project. And one of the things that was discussed with capital building projects is of course looking at a new court facility. We need to look at two sheriff substations. We probably need to look at the morgue, of course. We need to look at if we are going to build a courthouse, a new storage facility and even a, it could extend to an animal control facility. And obviously, we, we know that we have a quarter cent sales tax at sunsets in 2019. Any modifications to that actual quarter cent sales tax has to take unanimous vote of the board. So if we are going to be looking at new building projects, we need to do it through the budgeting process to identify alternate funding methods for those buildings. And what, if any, available funding from the quarter cent sales tax may be available for new building projects because that quarter cent sales tax, as we all know, has been augmented by other funds. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have gone through, I don't know how many board meetings. We've gone out for proposals and now staff is saying, maybe we ought to kick this can down the road till we have a plan. And I don't disagree. We should have a plan in place, a capital improvements plan, but it should be with the money we have now. And if this board doesn't address that issue, I mean, we're going to find ourselves in serious problems here. I mean, it should be a priority of this board to get a list of what we want to do and come to a consensus on what we are going to bill with the money we have available. Because I can tell you right now, you are not ever going to get a unanimous vote of this board through extending that quarter cent sales tax. I will not do it. So you have to do with the money you have now. That's all I have.
Madam Chair, if I could? As I understand it, we have roughly $15 million of unallocated sales tax money which we will collect in the future, which has to be used to provide a new courthouse and two new sheriff substations and will fall woefully short of what's required to get those three projects done. And so since we haven't yet managed to crack the nut of how we complete those three projects, I don't think adding a fourth project, which would make our task even harder, very wise. We have a very good medical examiner. I believe we have that medical examiner for roughly another year or so under contract. And if that medical examiner, Dr. Worrell decides that she doesn't want to be a medical examiner anymore, I think it's been years since we've gone out to bid to see if someone else wants to be a medical examiner. Because just on the year of the expenditures, we'd spend $200,000 or $300,000 more a year if we brought it in-house. And that doesn't include the capital building project, the building of a building. So I imagine, or I very firmly believe, we can replace Dr. Worrell, push came to shove, with the existing budget or at least less than what it would cost to run a medical examiner in-house.
I guess, Madam Chair, I disagree with that. I believe that as a professionally-run county, we have to have a professionally-run coroner's office, not something run out of a warehouse in Havasu. I think we're leaving ourselves open for legal issues. And I think as a board, maybe something we should agendize to say, this is what our capital projects are that we all, five of us, agree on and rank, whether it be whatever it is, whether I win or lose those. And the staff go ahead.
I agree with that. However, I want to know what changed from a couple of years ago to today when old boards agreed that this was the way, that we didn't have enough to have a full-time medical examiner, that it went out for bid and that, you know, what happened between two years ago and today that all of a sudden it's, it's not a professionally-run?
From what I can see, Dr. Worrell is far better than the prior medical examiner. And I haven't had any complaints about the service that she's provided from county attorney, public defenders, anybody. So really, I don't think that we can say she's not running a professional office. She is running a very professional office. It's just a mechanism by setting out to contract that we're able to do it far cheaper than providing everyone within her office insurance and all the benefits of county employment, which will cost hundreds of thousands more. So this is a cost-effective method that we're using. We have a fine medical examiner. I hope she continues to be our medical examiner. And the event that she doesn't want to be a medical examiner, we put it out to bid. If no one accepted that bid, my understanding is we could subcontract out to Coconino County if we had to. So there's actually a Plan C in place, push comes to shove.
Right. I think what you're saying is it's not a real top priority when you're talking about those, those projects. But I agree with Supervisor Johnson that maybe it is time that we do have this priority list because I'm with Supervisor Johnson, it's not, it's not going to happen if it takes a unanimous vote.
Madam Chairman, so the staff recommendation is to come up with a capital, extended capital building project and potential funding. Is that, is that what?
With existing funds?
Absolutely. That's all I was talking about.
So what is the action here?
I, I'll take a stab at it based upon our hearing, is that we currently take no action on the proposed county morgue except that as part of the capital improvement project's priority list, that this be reagendized and the staff bring it back to us so the Board of Supervisors can establish a priority list from first priority to last priority of intended capital improvements with existing finances, financial sources available to us.
Second the motion.
Okay.
And for discussion, it needs to be brought back to us before budget time because we have a capital improvement budget that goes into our budget book. So we have planning for the next amount of years. So we have to do that before we do our budget.
Within the next 60 days, is that sufficient time?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Moss, I think we can do it within the next 30 days. I've already got Public Works working on a capital building improvement plan.
Very good.
I'll amend my motion to have it brought back to us, to include an amendment that be brought back to us within the next 30 days.
Very good.
I'll amend it second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? 40. Discussion and possible action. Establish a 2014 Mojave County Fair theme, recognizing the counties, I have to say this right, sesquicentennial birthday. It's 150. I Googled it. What? Oh, I'm so sorry. I had to check that. I'm so sorry. Discussion and possible action. Approve the appointment of an interim clerk of the board and interim deputy clerk of the board effective May 5, 2014.
May I ask what County Administrator Hendricks's recommendation is?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Moss, my recommendation, and thanks for asking, is to appoint Ginny as interim clerk of the board at this range, at the step one of the clerk of the board range, and then appoint Debbie as deputy clerk of the board at the step, initial step one of that range. I don't have that right in front of me. I apologize.
So moved.
Thank you.
Okay.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Number 40. Discussion and possible action. Establish 2014 Mojave County Fair theme, recognizing the counties, sesquicentennial birthday, 150. Designate Saturday, September 13, 2014, as Mojave County's official sesquicentennial birthday celebration in conjunction with the Mojave County Fair at the Mojave County Fairgrounds. Approve an allocation of $60,000 from general fund contingency to fund county-sponsored celebration events and/or promotional items and direct staff to coordinate with the Mojave County Fair Association on planning and executing celebration activities as well as provide the board with a report on county-sponsored celebration activities coupled with estimated expenses and revenues at the board's July 7, 2014 meeting. Supervisor Watson.
Thank you. Chairman Angus, I bring this to you for your consideration in consideration of the sesquicentennial birthday celebration of the county. The $60,000 represents not an actual expense, but an authorization to prepay items that we will be selling tickets for to recoup revenue from. That's essentially what those dollars represent. If we were to put on, say, a large concert, a large laser work show, something like that, where we would be selling tickets to the event, these dollars would represent the prepayment. The tickets would represent the revenue.
And, and this is for the celebration that's going to be taking place at the fairgrounds?
Right.
In Kingman?
We anticipated that that would be one of the largest drawing crowds for the entire county to be gathering in that period of time. It's nice weather. There's a number of activities that are already associated with the fair and the fair itself is a celebration of Mojave County. And so we thought it would be very fitting to have the celebration in conjunction with the fair.
But there's nothing definite for the $60,000. It could be for t-shirts. It could be for an entertainer. You just want to give carte blanche $60,000 to?
Authorization to have prepay functions or, or ideas to prepay those items in lieu of then funding them through the ticket sales or other revenues coming on the back end to pay for them.
And who's going to handle, I mean, who's going to handle this? You mean all through the fairgrounds? I'm, I'm missing something here.
Okay. I'll give you an example. If Mojave County were to host, say, a name brand entertainer with a laser show and those costs were $50,000, then, and that's an example, then we would have money assured to pay for that contract and event, but then would have other folks sell tickets for the event to then pay for the event. Such like, such like the admission to any other type of function, whether it be admission into the fair or admission into the stadium where the event would be held or those types of things.
So we're just fronting the money? But, and we're guaranteed to get it back?
Well, I would hope we get it all back. There are going to be some costs associated with the celebration that probably won't be refundable.
Well, why isn't just the fairgrounds doing it? Since they're hosting the event and they're making the money, why wouldn't they just put out the money?
Well, if, if we're selling the tickets, the fairgrounds would not be sharing those dollars.
So who's going to, who's going to be in charge of this?
We could appoint the Kingsmen. We could appoint, we could make an agreement with the fairgrounds. And I'm just looking for an avenue in which to have funds available in order to And I'm just looking for an avenue in which to have funds available in order to do those different.
As I understand what Supervisor Watson's proposing, is we're allocating a budget that we're going to use for our 150th birthday of $60,000, and then we're going to direct staff, it's in the motion, to engage with the fairgrounds and others in order to put together a plan as to how to best spend those funds in order to put on a celebration for our 150th birthday. Am I interpreting that correctly?
That is correct. And I don't anticipate that $60,000 is going to be spent for the celebration of the 150th birthday. A portion of those funds, I would imagine, will be, but not all the $60,000.
I don't know, I just can't see, with our tight budget and what's going on for a celebration like this that's taking place in Kingman, you know, it's a county thing, but, you know, again, we're talking about Kingman, so.
Madam Chairman?
Yeah.
And I certainly can appreciate the tight budget part. I believe we, as we all know, the birthday, Mojave County's 150th birthday is November 9. And, of course, 150th birthday, what's a few days between friends, right? So what we would envision from a staff perspective is, our Parks Department and our Parks Director is familiar with putting on venues. We would, all the advertisement would be in conjunction with the Fair Association. They would be responsible for paying for the advertisement and including Mojave County's 150th birthday as part of their advertisement for the fair, because it would certainly be a draw for them also. They would be designating, and I'm trying to paint a picture for what it would be like. They would be designating the center stage and the Saturday for speeches, have dignitaries here, and then at the end of that, because the animals are so forth and so on, we would sponsor, like Supervisor Watson said, a headline organization, a headliner entertainment, which would, our staff's knowledge of that says that that would probably be in the neighborhood of $30,000 to $35,000 to have a name brand entertainer come and perform, and a laser light show is about $15,000 in lieu of fireworks celebration. That would, that would extend into the evening, and Mojave County would be responsible and able to collect the gate fees for that activity, for the name brand, and not share it with the fairgrounds, but for the name brand entertainment and for the light show for our people.
So we're going to run a show?
Basically, yes. Organize, and in talking to our Parks Director and Steve Latauski, our Public Works Director, that's what Sean does down at Davis Camp, for, he's done in the past. He organizes events, you know, and I think he would be the go-to person that we would call on to actually-
But it's not down in Davis Camp, it's up in Kingman.
That's correct. But he also runs Wallopives.
I know that, but I'm talking, this event would be up in Kingman.
Okay.
That's what's up to the board to decide, but that's what the proposal is right now on the table.
And if I could, Madam Chair, I've seen some flyers, I don't know if they came from Supervisor Watson months and months ago, or from the City of Kingman's Chamber when I was wandering around town, but they're doing something called Passport to Route 66. And this falls right into it, where all these, they're trying to basically create a center area where tourists come into, because it's not every day that 150th anniversary comes through, but they're also highlighting other activities around Mojave County, like Davis Camp, Oatman, Chloride, Lake Havasu, London Bridge, et cetera. So it's part, it's one, it's one, I guess, gear in an advertising machine for the entirety of our 150th birthday, but it really is a county-wide event. There is a center, there is an epicenter, but it's going to echo throughout the county with this Passport to Route 66 program that's going on.
But, you know, you're talking about putting on an event, so you're not just talking about the money you're laying out, you're talking about the, you know, the work, the employee time, you know, and again, going back to the situation, the tight budgets, is this, is this something that we really want to get into?
I under-
If I could ask a question of you, Madam Chairman, how much money would you like to spend, or would you rather not have a celebration of this type?
I don't think that it's, personally, I don't think it's time to spend money on a celebration like this, no. Unless, as I thought we, I had heard things that, you know, we're going to get a good return back. I, if the fairground is doing a celebration, why don't they just do the celebration? I mean, why do we have to be on top of the fairgrounds? I mean, who, with the fairgrounds having to say, who's going to make that money? They're going to make that money. So why can't they incorporate it and do it there? I don't see why we have to be involved in it. It's, that's a lot of money. I mean.
I have no, I have two comments or questions. The first is, I do believe the $60,000, you're right, is a lot of money. But if it's handled the way I perceive it as being handled, it's going to bring a lot of people into Mojave County when it comes to riding their, a bunch of German tourists riding their motorcycles from Las Vegas in for this event, and whatever it may be, it's going to bring dollars in. And so even though I have no studies to support this, my instinct is that it's going to generate the revenue, more than revenue, our investment's going to make a lot of money for the private sector out there, which in turn pays taxes to us. That's step number one. The second component to this, from my perspective, is, my view is that Mojave County is a growing county, we're becoming more, we're getting onto the map, and that we need to do things like this when it comes to celebrating Mojave County itself, and it is our 150th birthday. Whether it's England, you know, celebrating the Diamond Centennial, the Queen of England, whether it's little Mojave County throwing $60,000 into our birthday celebration, which may, as I understand Supervisor Watson's comment, give some of the money back to us. Now, he can't guarantee it, because it's a business, essentially. If it fails, we get nothing. We might get something back from the fairgrounds committees when it comes, if we sell so many tickets and some money comes back to us, that's great. But we don't know we're going to get all $60,000 back, we won't know until we actually do it.
And don't we give the fairgrounds money too?
I think we gave them money to improve some rodeo stands at one point.
No. Every year. We have not given Mojave County Fairgrounds Association any dollars for the last 24 months. It has been appropriated in our budget, but has not been cut to that organization. Now, just want to make a couple of items clear. The passport program is a program that's designed to, a celebration for all of Mojave County. And in order to get your passport filled, you'll have to go to Golden Shores, Lake Havasu City, Bullhead City, Wickia, Grand Canyon West, and those things. And this was, the concept is for it to be an economic driver for all of Mojave County. But, and we were going to pull the ticket for the winner that night of the celebration. But if your fear is that Mojave County cannot do this, or if the $60,000 is without, out of the reach of your comfort level, then I can certainly appreciate that.
I'd, at the very least, like to see some kind of plan. I mean, just to say $60,000 and have no control over it, again, is not something I would like to see either.
Well, maybe we can do it this way, if, I'll take a stab at it. I move that we provisionally approve item 40 of the agenda, subject to staff coming back to us within a designated period of time, with a plan, that, how this is going to be spent, and what we're going to spend it on, and what the prospects of recruitment or what, and I shouldn't say prospects, no one can predict the future, but the areas that we might see some recruitment, recruitment of that money, within 30 days, is that sufficient?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Moss and supervisors, to see if this, if it was even feasible to utilize the fairgrounds, you know, we had to talk to the fairgrounds people. And they were going to be advertising in the Mojave, our Kingman Daily Miner and the papers regarding their fairgrounds event, and they've agreed to postpone that advertising until this week, until a decision is made, yet up or down, whether we're going to be able to utilize, whether we want to utilize fairgrounds for the celebration. And then they would work with a newspaper to create the advertisement. So to answer your question, yeah, that timeframe would be great for staff, but it may not be great to allow the fairgrounds sufficient time for their advertisement needs.
Then I will withdraw my motion. I don't think there's been a second, and-
I just didn't have a chance to second your motion.
Thank you.
You know, when this whole thing first came on our radar, I was led to believe that it was just fronting money, and that we were going to be guaranteed the money back, that we were just going to help, and, hey, I'm all for a celebration, I love a good party, I think it's a good idea, but the idea of just putting the $60,000 out there to, you know, do with, and I need something more than that, I can't just say yes.
Supervisor, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I think the hang-up there is that the guarantee of a return, because if nobody showed up, there's zero dollars.
Well, if you're bringing in a name brand, you know, a name singer, you're going to get people coming to your door.
Sure, and maybe a thousand show up and we're $5,000 short, so we get $55,000 back and not $60.
So where's all the economic development?
Well, I'm saying, that's the downside. You're saying we need to have guaranteed, and there's no such thing as a guarantee. And these sort of, I think it's likely we'll get our money back.
I don't know, I just think that if the taxpayers who are watching this and hearing everything, and, you know, hears this, I just, I just don't see it.
Well-
But, you know, that's my opinion.
I move that we approve item 40 of the agenda.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So with a 50-50, that means no actions taken on this item?
No, it means it goes down if you don't get it.
It goes down.
Goes down.
So, thank you.
Madam Chairman, point of order, on the one item about the ME building, I believe we needed to reject all bids as a formal action, is what I'm being told by staff.
Okay, so which one is that? 38?
That would be 38, yes.
Okay. So, back to 38, which is the discussion on possible action of proposed county morgue.
Madam Chairman?
For reconsideration?
Motion for reconsideration.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Madam Chairman, I move that we reject all bids associated with the proposed county morgue.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, where are we? We are on number 41. Discussion on possible action: Filling the vacancy of the clerk of the board by advertising for the position.
Is that not covered in the other item?
No.
That was just interim.
That was just an-
We need to find the, we need to find a permanent clerk of the board.
Madam Chair, I put this on the agenda to see if the board wanted to go out for advertising to fill the vacancy left by the leaving of our clerk.
Okay, I definitely think that we should do that.
I would agree.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, I move that we require, we direct county staff to advertise the vacancy for the clerk of the board position, the availability of the clerk of the board position, and that that advertising go for some designated period of time, such as Supervisor Johnson.
Probably just, do we have our HR gentleman here? Kind of depends on anybody, if anybody puts in for it or not.
I was going to say 14 days, but.
Yes, sir.
Guess, what would you recommend? 30 days enough, or do you have any idea? How long would it?
Well, with our current NeoGov system, Supervisor Johnson, we can post the job and the job will go out on the internet as soon as we post it. And lately, we have been getting twice as many applicants as we have normally. So if we post it for 10 business days, at that time, we can review how many applications that we have, bring it to the board, and then the board can decide whether or not to extend it from that time forward.
How about if, is it possible that we can make a motion to advertise, a continuing advertisement, but having you bring it back at 10 days, you know, subject to the board shutting it down at any time we want? Can we do it that way?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, to get qualified applicants, if you're wanting to go out to the public, I think it's reasonable to say that somebody needs about 30 days to put some proposal, to be able to see the application that we have vacancy, and provide us with a resume and an adequate application. So if you're wanting to extend it, you know, whether it be area-wide or nationwide, at little expense with Neo.gov, I think a minimum amount of time might-
NeoGov, we've already paid, it's part of our maintenance fee.
Yeah, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about getting an adequate group of applicants in a reasonable amount of time. It's about 30 days, I would think, would be a minimum.
I would think, I would have no problem with a motion that says 10 days if we don't get them. I mean, we continue the advertisement going, but if, within 10 days or 14 days, we review it every time.
I'm going to withdraw my motion, and I'm going to restate it, as I move that we direct county administration to advertise the vacancy of the clerk of the board position for a permanent filling via advertising, and that at each subsequent board meeting from now, that all applicants are brought to us for review and consideration and potential further action. Does that sum it up, Supervisor Johnson?
Sounds good to me. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Number 42. Discussion on possible action: Authorize Supervisor Moss to expend funds of approximately $1,799 plus tax from the District 5 office account to replace the refrigerator at the Mojave Valley Food Bank, and this vote requires a unanimous vote of the board. Oh, sorry. You all heard me, right? Do I have to do that again? Ginny, do I have to do that again? Because, did you hear me? Okay. Okay.
If I may, others, two food banks in, or kitchens in District 5 that I'm aware of, one's in Golden Shores and the other is in Mojave Valley. The Mojave Valley Food Bank's refrigerator is not working, and they need a replacement. They came to me asking if I could assist in that endeavor, and I was informed by staff that I would have to identify a funding source and come to the board and obtain an unanimous vote on that. I checked my office budget, I believe I'm running a significant surplus, and I'm not spending everything that's been allocated. I don't buy as many paperclips as maybe I should. And so I have funds available out of my office budget if the board would approve me transferring it to, but I think this is a very worthy and publicly necessary cause, which is aiding those who can't necessarily help themselves.
Madam Chair, while I see where Supervisor Moss is coming from, I believe that those issues like that, and maybe your timing wasn't right, should have gone through the CDBG grant program to fund it, and your timing might not have been correct. My opposition to that doesn't come from that, it's just my perennial opposition to funding nonprofits with county money.
Well, if I, if I, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I want to interject here. I am philosophically against giving gifts of public money to nonprofits, picking and choosing where they go. But it is not, it is not unprecedented in this county, because I don't think people know that during the Christmas season, the supervisors each get an allotment of, I believe, $2,600 to basically give away, and I've been against it. I didn't personally take it this year, neither did Supervisor Brotherton, and I believe that we at least have to be consistent. So either we say yes to this, or we say no to all of it, to all of the giving to the nonprofits. So that's sort of my problem with this whole debate, that I believe that not, that you do not give gifts of public monies. We're fighting a court case on behalf of Mojave County on that constitutional base. So I have a whole problem with the whole thing.
If I could, Madam Chair, the monies which are allocated to each supervisor is not just to nonprofits, it is, more specifically, it's directed to food kitchens and food banks. It's a very limited category, and that is within our legislative, I believe, our legislative power, subject to the board approving it, when it comes to providing for the health and safety and welfare of county residents. But that's a philosophical point, and I understand your philosophy. I understand that there's a lot of people who fall through the cracks in the Mojave Valley area, in the Fort Mojave area, who are very, they're destitute, and that there has to be some sort of aid. These-
These food banks and kitchens do receive considerable assistance from the private sector, but this is something which has hit hard, and it's something that they need to have fixed and replaced if they're going to continue to provide adequate service, the money is available, and so it's really a difference of, I guess, quantity, not what we've done before, but how much are we willing to do, and I'm willing to spend a lot less in my county budget in order to make sure that these people are taken care of, is what it comes down to.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chair, yes. Supervisor Moss, you should be congratulated to championing this item to the board, but it's quite obvious to me that we're not going to get a unanimous decision on this, so it's probably a moot point.
Well, it's not a moot point until the vote is taken, so I move that we approve item 42 of the agenda.
Do we have a second? Okay, the motion fails, for lack of a second. Number 43, discussion on possible action, set a public hearing for July 7, 2014 to consider a change in fees for voter registration charges. Do we have our recorder here? Madam Chairman, supervisors, this is my supervisor of voter registration, and if you have any questions, she can answer them for you better than me.
We're just setting this for a public hearing, right?
Yeah.
I move that we, I move that we set a public hearing for July 7, 2014 to consider a change in fees for voter registration charges.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're very effective, Carol.
Sorry, sorry, it's late. Okay, I think this long meeting is over, anything else? With that, we're adjourned.